Call to order, the North Smithfield Town Council meeting, May 1st, 2023. Madam Court, can you start us with the prayer and the pledge, please?
Thank you for bringing us together today in the spirit of generosity. May we honor one another by keeping an open mind. May we voice our truth and listen with an open heart. May we discern your will to unite in fruitful outcome. Mr. Bureau God.
Here.
Ms. Hamilton.
Here.
Mrs. O'Hara.
Here.
Mr. Ogier.
Here.
Ms. Alves.
Here.
Open forum pursuant to 42-46-6. Linda Tebow.
Nobody can ever see me when I... Can you hear me now? Yeah, you can, okay. Madam President, members of the council, Mr. Town Administrator, thank you for letting me be here tonight. I just wanted to come and tell you about, May is Older Americans Month. In 1963, President Kennedy and the National Council of Senior Citizens designated May as Senior Citizen Month, now known as Older Americans Month, to celebrate seniors and their contributions to communities. Now, the United Nations defines anyone over the age of 60 as an older person. So I think there are lots of us older persons in this room tonight. You know, I always thought I was a baby boomer, but then I found out I was too old to be a boomer. I am a member of the silent generation, born between 1928 and 1945. It's the smallest generation in 100 years. Now, those that know me know that I've never been known to be silent, but at this point, I think I've been silent for too long. I am the North Smithfield Senior Advocate, and it's about time that I express my concerns and the concerns of my fellow seniors about an article in The Breeze about the $4 million federal grant obtained by Congressman Cicilline. When I read it, I hoped that he and the entire congressional delegation did not get the Valley Breeze, no intent, you know, nothing against the Valley Breeze, but it was full of innuendos, finger pointing, full of why things won't work and assigning blame, full of problems and not solutions, making us look very ungrateful. What are they thinking about us? I cannot recall the town of North Smithfield ever receiving an earmark grant. Paula, can you? I can't. Does the expression "don't look," a gift toss in the mouth, sound familiar? We may not have all the answers yet, but please do not let differing opinions put up roadblocks for this gift. Let's try to work together as a team for the good of the town. I just want to refresh everybody's memory about the history of the grant. It began with the former town council. I remember giving a PowerPoint presentation for the council about the value of a senior center on November 15th, 2021. After the presentation, discussion followed by the council about Halliwell Site not being suitable for a senior center. And then the council started discussing it. They made positive comments, and counselor Kim Alves made a suggestion, why don't we put an addition onto Scoutess Hall? So it seemed like everybody thought it was a really good idea. So, fast forward, I think it was about February, March of 2022, I got an email from Congressman Cicilline's office about a grant opportunity. I passed the information off to the town administrator. At the anniversary parade, Congressman Cicilline asked the town administrator, what could he do for the town? Town administrator mentioned, how about a senior center? The congressman told him, apply for the grant. And so it began. The planner and assistant planner got to work. They asked me for a letter of support because of my experience with seniors and senior centers. And of course, I said, yes, I was so proud that they asked me. I also shared information with them about senior centers to assist them in writing the grant. Then we got the good news. It was in December, and it was a wonderful, wonderful Christmas gift. And we were so all excited about this, getting ready for this and everything, that I'm not sure why or when the grant became such a controversial gift or a bone of contention. It didn't make sense to me. So, yes, it will cost money to maintain and sustain a dedicated space for seniors. Yes, we will need furniture, but that should not be a big problem. It shouldn't be an obstacle. Grants are available for such purchases, and strategic partnerships help sponsor events and programs. And businesses have been known to donate furniture as well. The chairs you're all sitting on tonight was bought by a grant that Aging Well, Inc. had to put on classes at Scoutess Hall. And so I picked out the chairs myself, with seniors in mind, so that they were high enough so people could get in and out of them easily, and also that they were strong enough for the sit, fit, and be strong exercise classes. And I think you'll agree, they're comfortable, aren't they? Yes, they are. The Halliwell Review Committee has offered to share some of their research to assist in the process. And the Senior Advisory Committee, of which I'm chair, is gathering information from senior centers in Northern Rhode Island about staffing, operational budgets, and scope of services. We've already gone up to the Gloucester Senior Center, and Lincoln Senior Center is next on our list. Yes, a dedicated space for seniors will cost money, just as it does for our schools, our recreation fields, turf fields, and even for people who break the law in our municipal court. But remember, seniors have been paying taxes for these services throughout the years and still continue to pay, even though most have not had a child or grandchild in school for a very long time. Many people of the silent generation, like myself and others, were taught to show respect to others by practicing courtesy and deference to authority. My parents brought me up that way. So I can be silent no more about the negativity in the press and on social media about North Smithfield. I think it's shameful, and no one is immune to these personal attacks. I was accused of wanting a senior center because I wanted to be the director. Well, folks, I'm going to be 80 years old on my next birthday, and I can assure you, I am not looking for full-time employment at all. I have no financial or political agenda. If I were looking for full employment, I would have taken the $30,000 sign-on bonus that lifespan offered for me to be the wellness nurse with them. So it's not about the money, folks. The work that I do is a labor of love. I know the work that I do keeps seniors active and independent in the community, and it's a way for me to give back to the town that my family and I have enjoyed for four generations. In my work with seniors over the years, I caution them about social media. I warn them about scams. There are so many scams out there, and they target seniors. I tell them, don't believe everything you see on social media. Sometimes it's the author's interpretation of the facts, embellishment of the facts, or sometimes just plain lies. One senior told me recently that she was receiving some pretty nasty content on Facebook, and she did not know the person who contacted her or how her contact information was obtained. She was very upset. So she was instructed how to block that sender. So going on. Then there are those that question my qualifications to be involved in speaking up on behalf of seniors or giving my opinion on the importance of a dedicated space for North Smithfield seniors. It was suggested I might not know what they wanted. For these skeptics, I'll offer you a relevant segment of my curriculum vitae. I have been in my field of expertise since I developed the Senior Wellness Program for Senior Services under a federal grant in 2009. It has been rewarded every year since. I guess we were doing something right. Because of my work, I was asked to speak at the National Meeting of the Massachusetts Council of Aging in 2014 on the transformation of the Wunsackit Senior Center into a wellness center, and in 2015, catching the wellness wave. We were way ahead of the wellness curve. I was asked a third time, but I said, nah, I want to leave them waiting, wanting more. This experience resulted in my being asked by the towns of Plainville and Norton in Massachusetts to help them develop their own senior wellness programs. Also, as a vintage registered nurse, I've had my fingers on the pulse of seniors for a very long time. They tell me loud and clear, I think you'll all agree, what they want and what they need. A man that's in the audience tonight asked for a pickleball court, and all those around him thought it was a smashing good idea. I'm visible in town and in the local communities. I get approached at Bridgeto's, Lulu's, Crazy Daisy, Stop &amp; Shop, Scoutess Hall. You know what I often hear, and it bothers me? Linda, what's wrong with your town? That really bothers me. For instance, an article in The Breeze a few weeks ago about the town administrator spending more than $1,000 aloud without consent of the council prompted this text, and if I'm good, I'll be able to get it up for you so you can see it, but let's see. Yes, I have it, okay. Missed you in class, hope everything is okay. Disgusted reading about the North Smithfield Council meeting in The Breeze. Some counselors are reminding me of the bickering that used to go on in Wunsackit. Administrator and some are doing their jobs, the others are jealous, and better start listening, and things will get better. There, I got that off my chest. That's what she said. Okay. So anyways, that happened, and then after the article was printing, we found out that the ordinance had been passed in June of 2021. That increased the amount to $5,000 that could be spent without consent. The motion was made then by Counselor Paul Vadney and seconded by Counselor Kim Alves. Roll call, vote was unanimous. Why weren't the facts checked before we started pointing fingers and assigning blames? Actions like these are counterproductive and give the town and its officials a very bad name. So speaking of facts, I'd like to give you some, because I know some people like facts. 22.5% of North Smithfield residents are over 65 years old. And if we look at all the other, you know, the United Nations 60, ARP wants us at 55, we probably have a whole lot more seniors in town than 22.5%. We pay taxes. We volunteer in the community. We deliver meals on wheels. We help in the food pantry. We serve on committees. We contribute to local businesses. We work at the polls, and yes, we perform our civic duty on Election Day. We have four senior housing sites. We have the Meadows, Colonial Village, Deerville Commons, and Gatewood. And our seniors live at Laurel Woods, Rock Ridge, The Mill, Silver Pines, senior housing sites in the homes where we raised our children. The Halliwell Review Survey results showed 40% voted for a senior center. The rest of the votes, and I think I'm right, huh, Jeff? You were there. The rest of the votes were scattered over many suggestions. I remember one that said, sell it so we can make money for the town. Another one said something about businesses, but, you know, 10% here, 10% there, 15, whatever. I was accused at targeting senior housings with the surveys, and I did. But thanks to the Halliwell Review Committee, I was able to bring paper surveys to seniors in all settings, because many seniors did not have internet access. And when I went before the committee, they said, let us help you. And so I thought that was really good. And so, you know, that's happening. And then the review committee also held a town charrette. I was there. I know members of the council, a lot of people were there. And the needs assessment revealed that services for seniors were woefully lacking. However, I will tell you, the seniors are very grateful to have the use of Scoutess Hall and very thankful that the former council provided monies to maintain the classes at Scoutess when the grant ran out, it ended. And for those people that say, people don't go to senior centers, and the naysayers say that, well, I've got some fact, I beg to differ. 100 North Smithfield residents are members of the Gus Ayar Senior Center in Wunsackit. 89 members, North Smithfield residents, are members at the Lincoln Senior Center. 39 North Smithfield residents are members at the Gloucester Senior Centers. And some anecdotally tell me, they told me today, some people were going to North Providence, and they go to Johnson Senior Centers, and some go to Blackstone and Bellingham as well. So the word is out. We go to senior centers, you know? You know, people used to, word senior used to connote something very important and good, you know, senior senator, things like that. But now, for some reason or other, people think if you put it next to center, it's a dirty word, but not so. Anyways, Kaseem Yarn, Director of Veterans Affairs, stood at the annual Veterans Appreciation Dinner. If you want to know how your veterans are doing, look to your senior centers. Well, we don't have one. The Korean War Veterans meet in Gloucester, and the Vietnam Veterans of America, Chapter 818, meet in Lincoln. Our VFW Post 6342 is very happy now that they have a space in the Memorial Town Building thanks to Richard Keen, and they're really happy. They also have told me how grateful they are that the exemption was increased that was brought by town administrator and voted on unanimously in favor of the former council. That was given to thank them for their service. They're happy about that. Okay, moving on. Because I was in public office in North Smithfield for seven years, I've been reluctant to speak and remain silent. Having sat on both sides of that table, I know public office can be challenging at times, and some of you may remember, I experienced some of those times when I was in office, but I try to remember the good times. I was a member of the town council and then president of the council when we worked together with Paul Vadney from the school committee. Bob Lowe was the town administrator, and council liaison to the school committee was Ed Yazbeck, a former fore of mine. But we worked very well together when we sat on the same side of the table. And I know Mr. Zulinski nodded his head there because he was on the council for those four years as well. And when my family and I, I was president, he was vice president, when my family and I suffered a personal tragedy, that was pretty awesome and awful, he stepped up to the plate and took over as president for me, and I was always thankful for that. But together, we finished that middle school on time and on budget. I also remember how proud I was to be master of ceremonies at the inauguration of this council. I listened to how President Kim Alves praised the qualifications of the newly-elected members. I was full of hope that the town would be in good hands with such qualified people and well represented by this council. I remember congratulating the new members and saying, you did well, now do good. Now, my advice to this council and the town administrator is, the election is over. Let's agree to disagree with dignity and respect and do good for our town. I grew up in this town without a high school. Now I'm a senior citizen in a town without a senior center. I hope I will get to see one in my lifetime. Perhaps if the town administrator and the council work together on this grant, I will get such a dedicated space for North Smithfield seniors before I say adieu. Please do not let this $4 million grant opportunity fail because of egos and political agendas. Nothing good comes of that. One final thought, May is Older American Month. Can we celebrate North Smithfield seniors and their contributions to our town? Thank you for, thank you, Madam President, and thank you all for your kind attention.
Mike Clifford.
Mike Clifford, 489 Black Plain Road. I asked at the last meeting, I believe it was the last meeting, if we could get an update on where we are at with reclassifying the farm, forest, and open space program land that is now occupied by solar arrays, and it was still getting that exemption. And it's been since last November that they've been working on it, and I wish you'd put it on the agenda so we can all hear how much money was recovered, if any, and what the story was. Secondly, I understood from different people, from who I wasn't at last month's meeting, but from different people, that you're now looking at a one-story police station and that it's going to, I attended some of the MBRTF meetings, and I heard the architect complain about how tight a one-story building on that lot is going to be. So I'd just like to suggest, I also heard that you were asking him for a price on the one-story. And I'd like to suggest that maybe the appropriate step to do first would be to survey the lot to make sure that what's on the town records is the actual square footage of the lot, because if you're only off by five feet, that's not a lot. I've saw four pieces of land. It's never surveyed to what the old timers surveyed it as. Now, the instruments are too sophisticated now, and you're either, you know, in my case, some were over acreage and some were under. So I would check that first before I spent any money on getting a cost for one story. And secondly, I'd like to suggest a charter amendment for the next ballot, and it has to do with the fund balance. I suggested it at the time when we started taxing people to put money into the fund balance, to build the fund balance up. And my concern was that there'd be an ordinary amount of money in that fund account at some point in time, and any council could come in and, for whatever reason, vote to spend it all at one time without going through the voters to get voter approval. So I'd like to suggest that in November, you try to get it on the ballot, that there's some type of filtering system that restricts councils from spending X number of dollars in excess of, let's say, $500,000 over a two-year term in the fund balance without voter approval for the project. I mean, I have no problem if it's voter approval for the project, but to start spending that kind of money, we now have, I think it's $11 million in that fund balance, and that's very concerning as to the priorities that will be given to it. So that's, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Scott Walling.
Scott Walling, 563 Greenville Road. Thank you for letting me speak. I came to this meeting, I don't get out to these meetings often. I am in the future. Last October 17th meeting, I questioned the council whether they knew that Material Santa Stone was operating an asphalt plant over there, which is prohibited in this town ordinance, but somehow we got it. We point the finger to one person, oh, he did this on the way out. Well, we have to pay for that mistake now, don't we? Or shouldn't we? Because I got stuck with it. My neighbors got stuck with it. We've had a lot of problems over the years. I've been at my residence for 38 years, in this town for 62. So I've paid my taxes. I've followed the rules of this town. Obviously, he's not, and somebody else is helping him. And driving into this parking lot, this school looks great. I went here, my mom went here. Asphalt, fresh asphalt on the parking lot. Can anybody tell me where we purchased that asphalt from? Does anybody know? Thank you. I'll rest and sleep better tonight, because I was hoping that that wasn't coming from material, because I could almost see how my story's going to go. I need this town to kick in and stand up for what we started here. This is a great community to live. We're giving it away weekly, weekly, solar farms, everything, development. I'm against it, all. I like what I live, but it seems like I'm getting, me and probably others feel the same way, we're getting driven out, okay? This town has to stand up to this and stop this, because he's raising trouble every town he goes. The people on Pine Street, I think it's Pine Street or it's Pine Court, where his other plant is. Pine Hill, they're tortured every day, in case anybody doesn't know that. Just go stand out there and watch the truck traffic. They're tortured every day. So what I'm, my problem is, I was there before him in 1985. He did come after, and I understand it was a sand and gravel pit, but there was no expansion. We got concrete, now we got asphalt, and other violations going on, but nobody seems to stop them. I don't know why. And, you know, it's like, okay, you say the environmental issues with the plant he's got. Yeah, okay, we were smelling in our house about this time last year. Once we start opening our windows, we get asphalt in the house, throughout the whole house. So now I have to shut the windows, put the air conditioning on. We like our windows open. Now, it's still, it's not humid out, the air's not thick. I'm outside, I've been home since March 13th. I'm out my yard every day. Those trucks, one after the other, the smell of asphalt is just, maybe it's not plant releasing the emissions, but the trucks going by, that's what I've got. So I've gotten all this, all my life since I've been on that property, just about. Not asphalt, but just other things operating. We called all, all went along since that meeting. Chief was here, and he told, the chief police, and he told me to call. I and another neighbor called all the way through December. It did stop, because they were operating sometimes 4:30, 5 o'clock in the morning. And I had, I don't know who it is, I wish I did. I had an officer, I called, they're not supposed to operate till 7:00, okay? I had, I called, all of a sudden, I heard a knock on the door. It was a young officer, I don't know who it was, 6:30 in the morning, goes, well, I've been sent out to the plant to see what's going on, but I don't know what I'm going going on, but I don't know what I'm going out there for." But he says, "Standing on your doorstep now, I don't have to ask you." He heard the noise, and this is every day. I got another neighbor here today that came. He's just hearing about this. We fought this 30 years ago with the blasting, where the town dragged the feet, and it seems like it's going to go that way again if we don't get help. I can't, this asphalt plant, oh yes, small batching plant, but the problem is, is that if anybody's paying attention to the highways being paved, redone, they do that at 3:00 in the morning. So this little plant starts off little, but then once we got it, we got this plant. So every one of my neighborhoods is going to have that truck traffic early hours of the morning, and that's when they pave. So I'm afraid that this is going to grow to that. It shouldn't even happen. So I'm asking the town, council, whoever is involved, who would like to tell me it's going to go forward to investigate how this happened? I met with Paul, he told me that they don't have a lot of records, okay? I went to see the building inspector. I told him my story. He didn't seem interested, or did he care? And I'd say it to him, he's sitting right here. That's the exact truth. So I need help here, because I didn't think this was my job to fight this battle when I bring it to the town. This is what we pay taxes for. Everybody's elected for this. I'm asking everybody to find me an answer. And if it was given wrong, well, we have to pay the price, and if we have to spend money, we have to pay for that individual or individuals that made that happen. So I'm just asking you for some help, you know what I mean? I don't, I don't think, I want to wait till another six months when I come back, and I got to say this again. I think this should be on an agenda for anybody. You know, we have, I have some paperwork that I've been looking through my records, going back to 2001, where I have minutes of the meeting. I'd like to know what happened, and I don't know what happened. I wasn't at that meeting, but I have a copy. I don't know if I can give somebody after a copy of it, but I mean, to find out what you talked about, because, Paul, you told me there was no records, a lot, you know?
I didn't say there didn't happen.
No, no, you said there was a lot that was damaged. But this is what I'm saying, so, you know what I mean? But I mean, so does anybody have anything to tell me where I can go from here?
Can you give us a date of those meetings, and maybe we can get them through the online?
I have a date of, I got, October 1st, 2001. There was discussion of zoning ordinance, asphalt. And we have a notice of a public hearing on 10-801 that I saved that was in the newspapers pertaining to the asphalt proposal. I've got a few things going here. I haven't gone through all my paperwork, but, you know, if it, it's currently not allowed in this, and it needs a special use permit. So I mean, did we, did he get a special use, or did we just rubber stamp it? That's what we need to know. And I think that's what happened here, and it was a little president on the way out from a few people. It's not called for, I'm not accepting it. I'm not going away, and I will get more neighbors. It's not a threat, it's just, I want the quality I started with in this town. I'm not willing to give it up. He, you know, if he does this in every town and nobody stops him, it's, and that seems to be what happens. It's just, it's just growing, and he's, you know, he could be here right now. We do not get along. But I want, I don't have a problem with a sand and gravel operation. I have to go with it. That's what I got. Anybody's welcome to come to my house and hear what I hear all day long. I have to accept that. I can't, I can't complain to that, you know what I mean? But that's what he's allowed to do, okay? He's not, he wasn't allowed to do concrete, he's doing that. He has another company that does concrete there. As a matter of fact, I was leaving my house at quarter of eight Sunday, and Colin Concrete Truck that leases a space out of there went by my house on a Sunday. Concrete truck, quarter of eight. I'm sure he wasn't just joyriding, he was coming out of the plant. So I know that that probably doesn't go to Material because he leases that out, but he's got to tell them they can't do that, you know? And I got to say, all the trucks going by, for the majority, they see me out there, they've gone reasonably slower, you know, and I thank them, because that's, that's what they should do, go to speed limit. And that's all I got to say. I wish I can, I hope I can get something further here. What do you think?
Yeah, let me see if we can try and find the minutes for that meeting and at least start there.
Yeah, and like I said, I'm going to dig through my papers, and I, you know, I'm going to have the time to do this, so I really need your help. I'm not willing to give it up, and I speak for my neighbors. Unfortunately, I have very few original neighbors there, because every neighbor that, if you were original, you'd be feeling like I do, very angry, because I feel the town let me down, and I needed addressed. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Yep.
All right, just want to move a few things around tonight. Let's jump down to new business for the Multi-Generational Advisory Committee, to put members onto the committee to get the committee rolling. Do you want to do it one by one?
Yes, I'd like to begin with, since I'm the oldest.
So the first one is one member of the town council for a term of February 21st, 2023 to February 20th, 2024, appointed by the town council. Anyone like to make any nominations?
I would. I'd like to...
Can I, can I make a nomination, please?
All right, since it's senior citizen, I'm going to make our first nomination, someone I've known and has been active.
Wait a minute, Claire, we're going in order. So the first one's a town council member.
Okay.
Well, isn't that me?
Sure. Anyone want to do it?
Thank you.
Yeah, anyone want to do it?
Madam President?
Yeah.
I would like, I would like to nominate you, I'd like to nominate Kim Alves as the council representative for the Multi-Generational Facility Board.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Roll call.
Mr. Bureau God?
Yes.
Ms. Hamilton?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Hara?
Yes.
Mr. Ogier?
Yes.
Ms. Alves?
Yes. The next one is a member of the public for a term of February 21st, 2023 to February of 2024. That's also appointed by the town council.
May go forth. No, thank you. I'd like to nominate Joanne Paulus, alias JoJo Paulus. She's been...
Wait a minute. I'm sorry, Claire, I think she's on the senior advisory committee, right? So this is, this is the person from the public?
Well, I should have, all right. Listen, I'm very agreeable. You're lucky.
Okay, so...
We'll get there.
Yeah, we'll get there. We'll let you...
I'm not missing out on the point.
All right, does anyone want to make a motion for?
Yeah, I've got, so we have, I would like to nominate Donna Naridawi as a member from public at large.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Bureau God?
Yes.
Ms. Hamilton?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Hara?
Absolutely, yes.
Ms. Alves?
Yes.
You skipped me.
Mr. Ogier, sorry.
All right, one member of the public for a term of 2023 to February of 2024. That's appointment by the TA.
Councilors, we've had two applications for a member of public. We have one, I won't mention the name, but I've had conversation with a very well-known person in town that's going to fill an application. I think you'd be very happy with that individual when the application comes in. Or I could, if it's up to you, if you want to hear the name. We did require applications.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, so we'll wait on application.
So you don't want to do the one on packet?
Well, if I do, then I've committed to someone I don't know. I've never met this individual, so I'm sure, reading the qualifications, it appears there, but I think when this person comes over an application, you'll be very happy with it.
Okay, so we'll come back to that one. Next one is member of North Smithfield Scout 438 or Troop 1139, appointed by the town council.
I'd like to make a motion to nominate Josh Sylvia from Troop 1139 for the Multi-Generational Advisory Committee.
Second motion.
So we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Bureau God?
Yes.
Ms. Hamilton?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Hara?
Yes.
Mr. Ogier?
Yes.
Ms. Alves?
Yes. We have another member of North Smithfield Scout Troop 438 or Troop 1139, appointed by the town council. Any motions?
Madam President, I'd like to nominate Roger Carden.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Bureau God?
Yes.
Ms. Hamilton?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Hara?
Yes.
Mr. Ogier?
Yes.
Ms. Alves?
Yes. All right, Claire, now you're up. One member of North Smithfield Senior Center, Senior Citizen Advisory Committee, appointed by the town council.
I am overjoyed to nominate Joanne, alias JoJo Paulus, for a seat on the Multi-Generational Committee.
Okay, we have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Roll call.
Mr. Bureau God?
Yes.
Ms. Hamilton?
You bet.
Mrs. O'Hara?
Yes.
Mr. Ogier?
Yes.
Ms. Alves?
Yes. And then we have another member of North Smithfield Senior Citizen Advisory Committee, appointed by the town council.
Madam President?
Mm-hmm.
I'd like to nominate Linda Tebow.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. I think we all...
I think we all seconded it.
I think we all agree that one.
This is a great idea.
Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Bureau God?
Yes.
Ms. Hamilton?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Hara?
Yes.
Mr. Ogier?
Yes.
Ms. Alves?
Yes. Then we have, so for public, oh, where is he? So Public Works and...
Oh, designated.
Yeah, I don't know who the designated is going to be, but, okay. All right, we'll have to skip that one. And town administrator, is the town planner actually sitting, or is he going to appoint somebody?
Well, it's the same situation you have here with the director. It's ex-official. They can appoint, many times when we had school committee meetings for expansion, the chief of police would, he was ex-official, but would nominate someone to fill in. So that, so what I would, do you want my suggestion?
I'm just asking if it's going to be him, or he's going to appoint somebody to do it.
Well, I, I think it's going to be the him or the assistant planner.
Okay, thank you. Ray for DPW, who's going to be your member on the Multi-Generational?
That'll be me.
Is it going to be, that's what I'm asking, you?
Me.
Okay, thank you. All right, so we just have to, Joanne, can we just send out an email to everyone and find out when it's convenient, what night's convenient for a meeting, and we can start the first meeting? Thank you.
Congratulations, everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right, the next one to move up is discussion by council voter, other action on yoga/walking/running club, Cheryl Marandola.
Thanks, Josh.
Thank you so much.
Hi.
Hi.
Cheryl Marandola, Chair of Parks and Rec Commission. So I'm here with two things, just looking for approval. Starting with the first one, we want to restart yoga. So we did it, we didn't do it last year, we did it in 2021. We just did it on the lawn over here by the dawn redwood tree. I volunteer as the instructor. And we did it last time on the weekend mornings, but wanted to try a weekday evening, so wanted to get approval for the 5:30 to 7:00 on either Mondays or Thursdays. We'll probably do it twice a month and shift it to see what time works best. So I don't know if there's any questions about that. From a liability standpoint, the approval last time was as long as certified yoga instructor, then it fell under standard town liability.
So the only thing on Thursdays is everyone will still be working, so the parking might be a little limited, but, you know, because everyone's still here till 7:00.
Right, because it's so late, yeah.
Did you have, did you have a lot of turnout on the weekends?
No, it was like a handful. I think the most we had was the first time, and there was probably like 10 people, but other than that, it was like four plus or minus.
Open to any ages?
Anyone's welcome. I'm still waiting for John to come. He promised me last time he would come.
I already did zumba.
So, yeah, everyone's welcome. We had everything from five, six-year-olds to older persons, so, yeah, we keep it so that really anyone can participate.
Administrator, do you have any qualms with a Thursday night?
I mean, if Thursday's a concern, we can stick with Monday.
I'm sorry, what was that?
Do you have any qualms with a Thursday night, since you'll still be working till 7:00?
Yes, I usually work till 8:00, but that's okay, yeah.
I...
Why don't you repeat your question, because I was making notes of what...
I'm asking if you had any issues, because most people are here till 7:00 on Thursday night, if they do a yoga class on the grass till 7:00?
Oh, I don't think that ought to fit with a yoga on the grass at all.
Okay.
We've done that before, right?
We've done it in the past, but we had always done it on Saturday or Sunday mornings when the town hall is closed.
No, it's beautiful weather, it's a late sunset.
Yeah.
It's ideal.
Yeah.
Bring bug spray.
Yeah, I always do. So if it's okay, we'll probably wait till it starts to get warmer, so wait a couple weeks. We don't practice if it's below 50 or over 85, just because it's cold or the heat can be dangerous, so.
Okay. And you're going to do this throughout the summer?
Yeah, we're going to try, we'll see what we get for turnout. Last time we did it, it was late season, so we sort of went till it got really cold. So, yeah, I'd love to keep doing it, aiming for twice a month, but would love to do it throughout the summer into the fall.
Okay, great.
I promise I'll show up this time.
I hope so. And then the second thing was, we wanted to restart the running and walking club, so we wanted to rotate volunteers from the commission to utilize the track on weekday mornings between 6:30 and 7:30 a.m. My understanding is, as long as we're off the track by 7:30 a.m., that's consistent with public use. We would use the track so people can do walking, running, their own pace, their own training plan. Just wanted to give a safe communal environment for people to come, meet, and encourage each other, and walk and run. But that's the basic plan. We're going to figure out, I'm assuming, some version of like a Monday, Wednesday, Friday, but would plan to be off the track by 7:30. There is a potential we could combine yoga and do a half-hour, 20-minute yoga flow after running, walking in the morning, so wanted to see if there's any questions or concerns with that use of the track.
Sounds great, as long as you had to get that through the school department, or...
We did confirm, Kate reached out to confirm that the track would be unlocked. I did check, the track is unlocked at that hour, and it seemed consistent. We did get confirmation that off the track by 7:30 was consistent with public use.
Great, sounds good.
Only because I didn't catch the dates. You said through the summer on Thursday?
For, yes.
The only concern we have is concerts on Thursday nights.
We can alternate them. We're not going to do it every week.
Just deal with Kate on that. She runs the concerts, so that would be the only conflict I see on Thursdays for like, I think, six weeks, I think it is. So, other than that, not a problem.
Great, sounds good.
Okay, yes. So good for running and walking.
Yeah.
Awesome.
Running and walking.
Thanks.
Yoga, breathing, deep breathing.
Yeah.
Meditation.
No money, free, we volunteer.
Yeah.
Good luck.
We need it all. Thank you for doing that.
Thank you.
All right, let's go back up to the top. Old Business A, discussion by council voter, other action on status slash progress report on what?
Oh, you mind giving me a break?
Oh, yeah, we'll take a few minutes, so everyone can leave. Thank you. Appreciate it. Thank you, Lynda.
Thank you.
Thank you, ladies. Oh, thank you.
Thanks for coming.
Bye-bye. Can you use a walker on that track? Or does it have to be a special walker, special wheels?
I'm here.
They have like a big one, they have very big wheels.
Okay.
They do make one for sand.
Okay. Old Business A, discussion by council voter, other action on status slash progress report on completion of specific items, the municipal building review task force. Any update?
Follow.
Good evening, Paul Vadney, 31, Greenville Street. I came for two things. One, if you guys had any follow-up questions from the other night was the main reason that I came. I don't know if you guys had any questions after that meeting. And the other issue was that we... And the other issue was that we had discussed was getting that resolution or the wording for a resolution, so we could stop pursuing, enabling legislation with the solicitor. And so, if you had any questions on that.
Does anybody have any questions from prior meeting?
Paul, I have a question. You said that you had the, correct me if I'm wrong, but you said you had the generic copy of what that resolution would look like as far as the, what the ask is, as far as the wording?
The wording? I actually don't, I don't have it.
Okay.
I mean, I can get it on my computer right now, but the solicitor wrote the last one. It's not, it's not, it's not difficult language. Enabling, a resolution for enabling legislation as far as for the...
Madam President, just to refresh the councils, you had presentation by bond counsel. When the council acts, the bond counsel says she'll prepare the resolution, she'll prepare the enabling legislation, that's her job. She's waiting for the council act. That would not be something I would do, bond counsel would do that.
Okay.
Waiting for the council.
Now we know.
Thank you.
Thank you.
But, I know that Ellen has the language.
I'm sure, yeah.
So, just to clarify, what do you mean, David, what do you mean, waiting for us to act, actually pass the, and say that we're going forward with this process?
My understanding is bond counsel made a presentation to the council several months ago, and said when the council is ready to notify her, and she would prepare any and all documentation necessary to have both a resolution for the legislation, as well as the referendum, and if that's the decision, the council, I think the council has to make some decisions before you start doing that. But, that's my understanding of the way she left the podium, Madam President.
Yes.
Unless I misunderstood.
No, that was true.
No, that's, that's, that's kind of what we're looking at, is to, so that at least they have the language in front of them, and it's ready if they want to submit it to the General Assembly, because we all know the General Assembly will be done the middle of June, the end of June, the latest.
So, we could ask her for a template and just not have any of the information in there, correct? Just so, just so we could see, like, I think what you're saying, you just kind of want to see the format of it, right?
Whatever the council wants. I mean, I know she's, she was waiting for the council to, to act, ask her to proceed.
I thought that's the way we were going, to have the template drafted up. I thought that's what we had discussed at the last meeting on Thursday, was when I said, let's, let's at least have the language drawn up, so that we can at least have it to look at. We don't have to act on it, but at least we can see it and start that conversation.
All right.
Okay.
Now, do you want me to send them email to that?
Yes, please, yes. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next item is three-to-five-year forecast.
So, the remaining items on that is, I just need to get the OPEP history. We did run into an issue with vision in terms of getting the history and building a projection out for tangible. I'm not familiar with vision, I haven't been trained on it yet, so I'm going to try and talk to another municipality to see if I can get some help between my tax assessor and another one. And then, granted, there's no other issues, it should be ready by next meeting, and I'll send it to you guys beforehand, before the meeting. Just as long as we don't have any more issues, like with the, with vision.
And could you also print out copies for everyone, too?
For the, for next meeting?
Yeah, if it's done, could you just print out, too?
Yeah.
Okay, great, thank you.
Madam President, can I ask a question? What is, how accurate is a five-year forecast going to be?
The further you get out on a five-year forecast, the less accurate it is, the, obviously, year one will be the most accurate, and then so on and so forth. It's, it's the understanding that that's what a forecast is, it's not going to be accurate, but it's a guesstimation. It's something to, it's kind of, it's kind of a benchmark, but not to be held by those numbers.
At least it shows us the peaks and valleys, right?
Correct, yeah, yeah, and, and, you know, when we go, when I go over it, there are some outliers and a few different items, like COVID money and certain capital project purchases that we had done that were outliers. I'll note those in the presentation and the papers that I give out.
Okay.
And it'll show us also depreciation over time, you know, because we know tangible depreciation in advance.
That's the problem, is depreciation for the tangibles. It's, from what I was told, again, I don't have, I'm not trained in vision yet, it's on my to-do list. But, the way it was explained to me is that there's no way for vision to break that out, because it's individualized. There's different classes, but the way it's reported to us, to each town, at least through vision, it's not something we can expand out on and go back on. We can look at old history on an individual basis. And on top of that, I know there's some type of legislation holding us back from grabbing certain tangibles to look at. I don't know, I can't get into more detail about it, because I'm not, I haven't read this legislation, but from what I was told, that you, I think you have to get a power of attorney to get certain records. So, that's where it kind of gets a little gray. If we were going to, we could spend a lot of time and grab all of them, it would take a lot of time, but I think there's legislation blocking us from doing that. That's why I want to talk to another assessor, my assessor, work out some details on it, and go from there.
It just seems like, for the benefit of getting a five-year forecast, the man-hours that went into getting that, I mean, it must have been...
I spent, I spent all day today doing it.
Yeah, I mean, but it seems like the man-hours that have to go in, we're a small town, to put the resources that have to go into getting the five-year forecast, it just seems that the benefit does not, is not make it worth the cost.
At first, one thing I will say, at first, it's not going to be super accurate, but over time, I, and my opinion, with the way the numbers are going to work, just as long as the formulas work out properly, over time, we'll, again, getting rid of any outliers, another COVID, or a $4 million grant, whatever the case might be. The more we keep doing this, the better and more refined those formulas are going to be, and the more accurate it's going to be. But, unfortunately, right now, it's not going to be accurate, but we have to start from somewhere on building this forecast and making it as accurate as possible. But, it's going to take, it's, you know, the, the man-hours that are going into this aren't fruitless, it's just, again, it's not going to be totally accurate right now, but over time, it will be.
So, there's two updates on the grants. One will be the Maori Tower update and the community-oriented police services, which is known as COPS. So, on Maori Tower, what's going on here is the CLAC group is finally coming in, they're hired by the federal government to come in and perform an EPA. That's been environmental assessment of what's going on up on top of, by Maori Tower, that's been done. Now, Rhode Island Historic Preservation Commission has entered into this, and they're going to be reviewing it to see if it is indeed a historic building. If so, then some of the requirements for the, for the repair work is going to change. That's about it for that. The second update, which is COPS, Community Oriented Policy Services, Policing Services, excuse me. So, that's been done on March 18th, the submission of initial grant registration application package via grants with, to the state, excuse me, to the federal government's been submitted. March 25th, submission of Phase Two, detailed grant application package via grants.gov was submitted. Now, all we're doing now is waiting for the Department of Justice to review the submissions package and issue a formal award letter. So, there's nothing more to be done by town planner, and just waiting for an approval to receive the funding.
And how much was that?
That was $375,000.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Can I ask something?
Sure.
Speaking of grants, just, it would be nice if we could get a grant for recreation equipment over by Scouters and Pacheco. I believe the EM offers grants for recreation purposes, include, like, for these types of playground equipment and stuff like that, that may be a good place to start. I don't know if the planner has any experience in that, but if we could at least just check to see, it might be beneficial, since we're looking to renovate that area anyways. I know I hear a lot about, from residents in town, that that equipment has seen better days, and I think if we can improve it, we should.
Discussion by council voter, other action regarding a request for proposal for a grant writer, Mrs. Zelensky.
This been, while you should have, I know you have received this electronically, previous meeting, you asked that the town, town planner was rewriting this RFP. There were some questions about verbiage and language, and he went into YouTube to watch the suggestions that were made. If hopefully some of the council people submitted comments to him, you have it in front of you now, is there any questions about it?
Okay.
The RFP.
There's two things that I would like to see changed. The Finance Division, where it says bids, I would like to see that say Director of Finance. And the, on the backend, on the evaluation procedure, where it says the town may conduct interviews with top-ranked firms, I want that to say the town will conduct interviews with top-ranked firms. I don't see, I said it last meeting, I said it, I'll say it again, I don't see why we wouldn't conduct interviews with top candidates. I feel like we could get ourselves in a bad situation in that instance, so I think we would want to at least meet them, even if through Zoom or Teams or some other type of electronic technology, but I would like to see that changed.
Council, what section, do you mind?
So, that's Section 9, Evaluation Procedure, Bullet Point 3, the town, where it says the town may conduct interviews with top-ranked firms. I would just like to say the town will conduct interviews with top-ranked firms prior to making a selection of the most qualified and responsive firm in the best interest of the town. And maybe change the language from firm to firm and/or individual.
You say and/or individuals?
Individual, because, you know, I could be a grant writer, I'm just using hypothetically, and I don't have a firm, I could be a sole proprietor. So, unless, I just want to make sure it's like, you know, we're not discouraging people from applying.
So, the last council, if I remember correctly, there was a question about insurance, about having Arizona Mission Insurance, was that Councilor Hamilton? Does that meet with your okay, what's in there now?
Yep, that looks good.
It does? Okay.
I just have one quick question on the front page, under location, Park Square being one of the villages. It says Park Square, is Park Square one of the villages?
Yeah, I've seen it, I've seen it as one of the villages before, yeah.
Really?
We'll double-check, comp plan.
Park Square?
Well, I'm sure, Union Square.
Union, yeah.
I think it was.
Okay.
We'll double-check.
All right.
And what people around there use it so often that, as I refer to, Union Village.
Yes, Union Villages, isn't it?
And then you have Union Square.
All right.
Madam President?
Yes.
We, when we started with the whole grant thing, we had, we had the temporary, we had the grant writer for one month, and we agreed that we were going to go out for an RFP. Mrs. Zelensky got, on your recommendation, we went with the RFP, we copied an RFP from another community. The president made some changes to it, and we were ready to go forward with it. The following meeting, you had COVID, you were out, and Mr. Oger was the acting president at the time. We were ready to vote on that RFP, and he decided that it would be a good idea to wait until you were here to take part and vote. The following meeting, I wasn't here, however, then I was away on vacation with the family, and the grant came up, I mean, the RFP came up, and we didn't vote on the changes that you made with, originally, but we, people wanted to make more changes. So, we kicked the can down another two weeks. So, here we are now, we just keep making these little tiny changes, and we keep putting this off, keep putting it off. We, and next week, we can, next meeting is going to come along, we're going to find more things to change on this. It doesn't, it's not rocket science, you know? We don't have to make, change every little detail, just because it's not set in there, it doesn't mean we can't do it. So, we don't have to change every detail and keep kicking the can down the road for this grant writer. It's worth noting that in the, since we've been without a grant writer, we missed out on a number of grants. We missed out on Main Street, a Main Street streetscape for $500,000. We missed out on site readiness for $125,000. And we missed out on something that we could have helped our local businesses with, it's called Take It Outside, it was a maximum award of $100,000. Now, I don't know what percentage of those grants we would have received had we applied, but I'll tell you what percentage of those grants we're going to get now. And we just keep kicking the can. Let's just figure this out, it's not rocket science. We had a very good one that you recommended to the, to the town administrator. We should have voted on it and been well into the process by now in hiring a grant writer. Now, we're making more changes again, and we're going to kick it down, down another two weeks.
May I?
Sure.
I think what we can do is approve it based on the miniscule changes that we have right now. I mean, they're not major changes.
That's a great idea.
And then, you know, so it'll be approved based on...
That's how, that's how I was going to do it.
Yep, I think that's either that way, we don't have another meeting, we don't have to worry about...
Exactly, right.
Yeah, I think those changes are good, we've all weighed in, we all feel comfortable, so, we're not...
Can I, can I just make a comment, though? There are still a lot of areas in here that just speaks of a firm and not an individual. Mr. Badney made a good point last week, maybe in the beginning, just put firm slash individual, and then say applicant, and then throughout the, the RFP, just say applicant, because then I'm, I'm just wondering, when it starts going into the points now, there's personnel qualifications and availability. It's, that's specifically talking about a firm with their personnel and what kind of background they have. So, I'm not sure how an individual person would get these points, because they wouldn't have people working for them. So, I guess just understanding how this whole points thing is going to work, and when it's just an individual.
So, you're saying they might be penalized if they don't have that?
Yeah, because they're not, they're not going to get points, because they don't have, it says project personnel, they want, you know, their academic background, training and stuff, but that's for a firm. If it's an individual, does that mean they're not going to get these points, and now they're not going to be in the running? So, I think it just needs to be clarified how this points is going to work.
Sure, what verbiage would you like me to include, ask the planner to include, do you mind?
Well, I'm not sure if we can use this personnel qualifications at all.
Eliminate it.
Maybe, yeah, maybe eliminate it, because if it's an individual, they're not going to have personnel. And then the top one says company qualifications and experience, we would have to change that to applicant qualifications and experience. Just so we, we're not saying we're not going to hire an individual, that is going to be strictly a firm.
So, I just want to draw your attention to something, the, the grant that you submitted as a template, I believe it required 10 years of experience in state and local government. What Mr. Corullo wrote was five to 10 years, and I said, why did you change that? He goes, were you going to say no to somebody with nine years?
Right.
Yeah, so, so he is trying to make it as open as possible.
Yeah, but I just want to make sure that we're not excluding an individual who may be wanting to do this, you know?
As opposed to a firm.
Correct.
Okay, so, in essence, so, when we're looking at the evaluation selection criteria of company qualifications and experience, and then personnel qualifications and availability, those should be looked at, is that what you're saying, Madam President, look at that a little tighter?
Yeah, because the company, we might want to just do applicant qualifications, and maybe the personnel part of it, we might want to exclude that, because they might not necessarily be a firm, and it won't have personnel.
So, if I heard correctly, I think there was consent by the town council that if these are changed, then I would be authorized to go ahead and move forward with this. But, before I do, a question for the solicitor, if I were to send it to council members for an individual comment back to myself and Mr. Corullo, can we do that? No?
No, we can't, we can't keep, we can't go on forever with this.
All right, so, I will do my best to articulate what you said tonight with Corullo, Planner Corullo, and...
Well, how about this? How about this? If we could appoint, say, Kim as the president to co-approve, to make sure that everything was captured, she is mentioned in here, that's the reason I deferred it the first time, was she's mentioned in here, and I had told her I was going to defer it so she could weigh in. And if she's okay with it, and feels like it captures everything we talked about, then that should be good enough. We can do that under the Open Meetings Act, so we could appoint somebody as a designee.
Well, yeah, you know what I'm getting at.
Right, yeah.
And then I just have, and then, in the, in Section 9, again, Evaluation Procedure, it says all proposals will be reviewed by a steering committee. Do we want to kind of clarify what, because we're not, we don't have a steering?
Yeah, there's a reason for that. I don't know that one person should be making this selection to such a very important position.
Right.
And so, as far as the steering committee, it could be whomever you want to set it up, as being a member of council, a member of Parks and Rec, a member of planning, but it should not be just up to one person to do, that's my thought process.
I mean, do we want to kind of come up with a couple of individuals, rather than do this steering committee? Because that's kind of vague, and then once we go ahead with this, now we can't change it. it, and.
I did see that earlier. Where is that?
Section nine. First one.
See, the, my concern is a unilateral decision. Much like when it came down to something else we approved for personnel, about who was going to make the decision for benefits of, of an individual person. So I, I'm really concerned about a unilateral decision, so if you had a committee, maybe one of the council members, uh, maybe POCS and REC, planner, but that'll be up to the council. I, I, I just don't think it's appropriate for the town administrator to be making that decision on such an important, uh.
So do we want to say reviewed by a committee, and then kind of like subnote that, um, selection of committee will be, will be decided?
Do you mind?
Well, we should decide that tonight, so we can put, we can put this in there.
Do you want to do president, vice president?
Yep.
Do president, vice president, planner?
POCS and REC?
POCS and REC.
Or DPW?
Yeah.
Yep.
Um, that's, do we need one more?
Need one more. Odd number.
Um, finance director.
Yeah, good idea.
I think we're overcomplicating the process, but.
I don't think so. I mean, if we need to review it, we just don't want one person reviewing, so.
Yeah, unilateral is not a good idea.
No.
So, uh, council president, do you mind, uh, how many from town council? Two?
Uh, president, vice president, um, planner, DPW, and finance director.
Got it.
And then with those changes, then we can look at the draft and.
So I'm going to make a motion that we approve with the amendments that are on the table upon review by the council president and the town administrator. Do you want a second there, please?
Well, I'm going to second for discussion.
Okay.
Is, is that?
Yeah, I just, the motion, the motion seems a little complicated. Are you first moved to ma, um, to make the amendments?
Yes.
I'm approving it subject to the amendment.
Oh, subject to the amendment, that's fine.
Right, yeah.
And I second it for discussion.
Subject to.
I was the, I, okay, you got that, good?
She's just trying to get clear, it's to, for council president and to the administrator to approve the amendments.
Uh, this, originally, you go back, this is my agenda item, I'm the one that started the, the process there, and I would like to be on that committee. I don't know why, it doesn't have to be the president and vice president, could be another council person.
So just put two council people, and I guess we'll have to figure it out then.
Okay, that's fair.
Do you mind just making two council people instead?
That's a good idea.
Yeah, and I guess we'll decide then.
That way you can get this done.
Yeah.
Please.
So it'll be two council people, the finance director, POCS and REC, and planner.
Correct.
That's five members of the committee.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second, right?
Additional discussion. So, I just, the, what council member, Bureau God, had just said about grants that are being lost, the reason we put grants on as old business is that if there are potential grants coming up, the council should be made aware. So if we need to go out and hire somebody as an, like, as a need basis, we could authorize that to help fund these things. A lot of these grants, they're on a schedule every year. Like Take It Outside has been around since 2020, and Sock has been banning from it, other cities like Cranston have been banning from it, DEM is on a schedule with either open space or recreation. A lot of these grants that we're looking at are on a schedule and on a basis that we should know that they're coming up. So I, again, I, if we can increase the, improve the communication, which I think it's doing, it's getting better, and we're, we're getting to know more, I just think that we shouldn't be missing grants and finding out about it at a council meeting. So, again, if we can just be a little more proactive, that would be great.
Uh, just how do we find out about the grants if, but you have, you, and you have a full-time job, we all have full-time jobs.
Yeah, I agree.
Without a grant writer telling us, hey, look what's coming up, look what's coming up, there's a list of things coming up. That's what we hire, hire a grant writer for.
Well, I spoke to the planner, and he was pretty aware of some of the schedules, so I think we should at least start there, and then if need be, and he's like, hey, I know other communities I've heard from, I'm swamped, I can't do it, I need additional resources, can you ask the council? I think that's one way that we could look at it.
Yeah, we could. But there may be, there may be some smaller ones that don't take as much time, and he might be able to do them. I mean, um, but also, at this time, we should be taking this time right now to, to meet with the departments and find out what it is that we really need for grants, so that when we do have finally someone, we know which direction to send them in, and not just running crazy and trying to find any grants. I mean, we should be taking this time to, to see what we actually really need and see, you know, try and make a list of, of our priorities, too. So this really shouldn't be lost time, this should be time that we're getting ourselves ready, so that when we do get a grant writer on, on payroll or a firm or however, that we have a direction for them to go in.
I agree. I, I think you're absolutely right. However, it could be a two-pronged approach. For instance, we, exactly what you just said, then also, because they have the knowledge of, and the, and the information coming through their office, whoever it may be, there might be one that comes along that we never even thought of, that nobody, you know, that would, we'd love to have it brought to our attention that we could possibly get.
Right, but that might be just one or two, but at least if we have a roadmap where we need to go and what's the most important, then we can go running as soon as we get this ready, and we, and we start, you know, having applicants come in, we know exactly where we need to go and, and send them, like, to our top priorities. And as things come up in the meantime, at least we can still discuss those, but, you know, we, we talked about that when we did have a grant writer, like, we need to know what direction we want to send them in, we just don't want to send them running crazy looking for anything and, and trying to just grab at things that, you know, we might need a little bit more than other things. So we have a motion and a second, right?
Yes.
Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Bureau God?
Yes.
Ms. Hamilton?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Hara?
No.
Mr. Ojier?
Yes.
Ms. Alves?
Yes. Uh, discussion by council vote or other action on approval and authorization of signature for hollow master plan contract with BHNA, Bargman, Hendry, and Archetype Inc., AIA, Document B105, Mr. Porter.
Uh, good evening. A couple council meetings ago, I was before you, where we, the Hollowell Review Committee had made a recommendation to go forward in contract with BHNA for the master planning of the Hollowell property. So this is just the, I'm here to answer any questions that you might have about the contract, um, and looking for tonight a favorable vote to move forward, um, with the master planning with BHNA. It's going to be about an eight-to-nine-month process. Um, so that will certainly be keeping us busy for a while, and, uh, we'd certainly be keeping you, you folks up to date on what's going on, but, um, we're ready to go, and with the thumbs up and the authorization for the administrator to sign, uh, we're, we're ready for it. So if there's any questions, I'd be more than happy to answer them for you.
No, I was just going to ask for the, just for clarification, um, we had discussed that there would not be a building on that property for several years, so just to make sure that we're all clear about what the, um, role is of this BHNA, and, um, just for everyone's edification, right?
Yep.
So we're looking at the entire piece of property, we're determining where there could possibly be a building based on wetlands, based on proximity to different things, and then we would be looking to more immediate needs and uses of that property?
Yep, that's correct.
Okay, great.
Yeah, our, after hearing feedback from the council, you know, our first phase of this master plan is certainly going to be looking at the open space and recreation to get that identified a little quickly, and, uh, understanding that there's grants that could be up for potential, that we can have, you know, segment out that portion of the master plan, but then also be looking at this as a, you know, 10, 15-year project. The hope is also that we are in close collaboration with the newly-formed multi-generational facility, uh, group, just because, you know, we have $4 million, $4 million is only going to bring us so far. So once they get their, go through their process of what their sites, what, um, Scouters Hall site and building are going to look like, if there's any shortfalls that we need to pick up on our end to make sure that there's some consistency and some collaboration, there's certainly going to be those efforts. So then that way, uh, no group down at Scouters is getting short-changed, and we're accommodating everybody.
Thank you.
So I noticed the, uh, the schedule of meetings. So when do you, like, it says three council meetings, so what is, when is that, like, good? Is it the beginning, middle, and end, or are they more towards the end?
That's what I was kind of looking at, is that we were going to kind of do like an introductory meeting to BHNA with the council, so that you could understand the players that are, that are working, that you're essentially hiring. Um, may, if there's any, um, set, set goals that you'd like to see them accomplish, it would be outlining those goals. It could probably, it would most likely be a joint meeting with the Hollowell Review Committee. So if there's any expectations that you want to set at, at that kickoff meeting, that's when you would be kind of laying that groundwork for what's to be expected of them. Then I was anticipating a mi, uh, meeting in the middle as a progress report. You'd obviously be hearing from me or whatever council liaison gets appointed, um, to kind of give you intermediate, interim updates as things progress. But then there would be another midpoint presentation to the council of, you know, here's what's been done for the past, you know, three months, four months. Um, and then at the final, uh, meeting would be the conclusion of their report. So all of their findings, what they've, uh, accomplished in their master plan, you know, what the phasing would be, what the cost estimation would be, escalation, what they've really learned about the community, how, you know, giving us some best, uh, recommendations to move forward. So really, um, those would be the kind of meetings that we have. And if we need to have, you know, another joint meeting with, with the council, I put in the RFQ that they're meeting with us monthly, so, um, you know, for the next, you know, eight to nine months, they're at least meeting with us monthly, so we can certainly make one of those meetings a joint meeting as well, if you felt like there was a, a need for, for additional time to meet.
Yeah, I just want to clarify, that is monthly?
Yes.
They're going to meet with you?
Yep, at, at minimum. I know, um, our, our group tends to meet when we're moving quickly, every two weeks. Um, when there's going to be, uh, further consultant work, it might be once a month, typical of all the other committees in the group, in the town. So, uh, it just depends on how, um, quickly BHNA moves forward and makes progress that they want to report to us. I know sometimes, uh, two weeks, a two-week turnaround sometimes gets to be a little tricky for nine months, and I can say that speaking from experience.
So the, the one, when they have hold and participate in three additional public charrettes or meetings, is this basically the same thing we've already done with Weston and Sampson?
It's building upon that.
Okay.
So, you know, I don't want to talk for BHNA in their process, but this is, you know, again, uh, meetings to drill down on, further from what Weston and Sampson has done. Weston and Sampson was very high level, now we're going to, you know, the next steps down, um, looking to see, you know, aesthetics-wise, if, if and when we look at buildings, you know, how are we going to do a glass and steel building? How does the town feel about that? Um, are we doing a traditional brick and mortar building? How does the town feel about that? That sort of thing. And then also, um, looking at certain adjacencies. Okay, so, um, you know, we have one group over here that's doing robotics, we want to make sure that they're close to the 3D printers or whatever, and then there's, you know, the, the, um, community garden, they don't need to be right next to there, but maybe we need to make sure that there's storage for them, and there are showers and bathrooms so that they can come off, af, after they're done in the community garden, they can go rinse off. I know Cheryl can probably speak after spreading manure, that it would, probably would have been kind of nice just to go in and, you know, wash yourself off as opposed to using the hose, uh, just on your hands after that. So, um, a lot of different puzzle pieces moving at once, um, seeing how they all fit together, um, in the best way that they can. So it's going to be, um, a very collaborative and interactive process that we're going to be going through in the next.
And at what stage would those start happening?
I'm going to let BHNA dictate those, uh, because it's going to be dependent on how much information that they have between the Hollowell Review Committee's report, the Weston and Sampson report, the feedback that they hear from us as the committee and, and the council and other groups that we've met with. Um, it's, I'm going to let them kind of dictate when they think is going to be the best time to meet. So I can certainly give you, one of the things that I'm looking for, um, from them when we have our, I'm hoping that we'll be able to have our next meeting, uh, middle of the me, of May, that we get a more in-depth schedule to really figure out when all these meetings are, uh, because I know summertime, it's a hard time to have charrettes, people are on vacation, school's out, um, so if we need to, you know, gear up and get something, you know, at the, you know, beginning of June, um, middle to end of June, and then reconvene with those charrettes in September when everybody's back and ready to go, um, I was going to like, like I said, I was going to let them kind of dictate when the, he felt those would be the best times to, to meet for those.
Okay.
And that's why we've put three, we didn't just do one, because we did one, we heard about our last charrette, how some people didn't find them convenient, that they couldn't make the times, so we were going to be looking to having various times. It's not going to be Thursday night at seven o'clock every, every charrette. It's going to be at a different time, at a, at a larger location, so then that way, it's accessible for a, a wide variety of people, because we want to make sure we're getting a wide, uh, range of feedback, uh, when, as we go through this.
Any questions?
Jeff, uh, you, you mentioned something about, uh, the buildings and all that stuff. Would it be cheaper if we went into this with BHNA, if we went into this saying, just hypothetical now, we have no interest in a building, forget the building, we're just looking for an open, open space? Wouldn't that make the contract a lot less money, because they wouldn't have to put all that time and resources into trying to figure out the buildings and the design and where they should go and all that stuff?
It might be less money now, but it will not be less money in the long run, because you're going to be tearing things up, you're going to be relocating things, you want to have a full mapped-out parcel, piece of property. You don't want to be putting, uh, and I think I've said this before, but you don't want to be putting one thing in one place only to come to find out, oh, this is, you know, the best place for a building, so now we have to pull up all the basketball courts and relocate them. So, not really. You're not going to be saving any money.
So that's a good explanation for the layperson, right, who's listening, is, I want to make sure, I, I agree that we want to utilize that property sooner than in the, you know, if it, there's an inevitable building on there, that's good, as long as we have a space available for it, good. But the rest of the utilization of that parcel, I think what we're hoping to do is have it, um, you know, be able to do pickleball and do basketball and do walking tracks and things on that property much sooner, so I hope that they, are they, they're very familiar with what we're looking for at this point, right?
Yeah, they've read our reports. Uh, as I said at the last council meeting when we made our recommendation, uh, Mr. Bargman had gone down to the site and walked the entire site and thought there are some, you know, really good opportunities throughout the entire site for various forms of recreation, various forms of buildings. Uh, so really, uh, it, I was very glad and, and happy to have him come and bring his expertise to the table for us.
Thank you.
But what's the building, we're going to put a building down there? We have a senior center going up at Pacheco. Is a building, is the town lacking that? Like, is that something that you think that the town is lacking? Like, do we need, you think there would, a community center is something that, yeah, I'm not saying there wouldn't be anybody in there, but do you think it's something that we really are lacking in this town that we should have, that we, people would go to and use? I don't know.
I wouldn't be here if I didn't think that. You know, in conversations with the Board of Trustees over at the library, they only have one community room. They have to schedule every 15 minutes of that community room. It is probably a third of the size of this room. We have a population of 12,000 people. 12,000? I think 12,000. And we only have a community room at the library that services this area. They are lacking space and they cannot provide the services that they'd like to provide. That was a conversation that we have had with the Board of Trustees and the library director. Mr. Vadne has alluded in previous council meetings that we might need a new elementary school down there. So it would be good to have a starting place for whatever school architect that might get brought on, that we have a space for them and we don't have to pull up the pickleball courts, the community garden. We already have the space set aside for that and ready to go. And they, there's minimal site, now there's minimal site work to be done. We don't have to go tearing up all those things. So in looking at the town's comprehensive plan, understanding that this town is still growing, yeah. Where you're, and I can, I'm going to guarantee you this, once you're down at Scouter's Hall, they're still going to say, we need more space. That is my experience with libraries and other town-run buildings, that the number, aside from it's either too hot or too cold with the mechanical system, that's the other complaint. The other complaint is, we should have gotten more space. So you're going to find that that's more than likely going to hold true with the Scouter's renovation, expansion as well.
Anyone like to make a motion?
I'd like to make a motion to approve, where is it? I'd like to make a motion to approve the unauthorized signature, the Hallwell Mass the Plan Contract with BH and A. Yep, that's it.
We have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Oh, yeah, sorry. Yeah, and the amount of $120,000 as discussed prior.
We have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Bureau God?
No.
Ms. Hamilton?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Hara?
Yes.
Mr. Ogier?
Yes.
Ms. Alves?
Yes.
Thank you very much, I appreciate the time.
New business, a discussion by council voter, other action on amendment of water supply review committee resolution, Mr. Ogier?
Yep, so this will be really quick. The group for a while has been, we have been struggling to find a conservation commission member. And a while back, the group had also proposed throwing out, throwing out the idea if somebody from the North Smithfield Land Trust would be interested. So the resolution, if it could please be changed to a member of the Conservation Commission or North Smithfield Land Trust. And, you know, in thinking about it more, and I briefly talked about it with the solicitor, it may be good to make one of those positions an alternate, just because of the nature of what we're looking at, having somebody from either/or the Conservation Commission and/or the Land Trust. You know, we meet when we can find availability in the Town Hall. And so some nights we do run into situations like there's a planning board meeting and two of our members can't attend, or, you know, there's a conflict just based on the nature of it. And we don't have an alternate, so we usually always have a quorum, but it would be good to have just an extra voice to be able to talk. So I don't know if that's possible, to approve an amendment to the already changed potential resolution? Just to make either/or, like, to make an alternate position? I don't know if we need to do that separately?
Do you have an alternate position to the membership?
Yeah, and we could do it at a future one, too. It doesn't matter. I don't know what's the easiest way to do it. We could do it, we could do it next meeting, make it easier.
Pass this now?
Yeah, and then...
And that'll get the committee going?
Yeah.
And then you can make an amendment to add an alternate? Because it's only going to be an alternate?
Right. Yeah, no, I agree. Thanks. And then, one last thing, just...
Will the alternate come from any particular group?
Yeah, we can, we can talk. Yeah, depending on. Just wanted to plug, as we're talking about this group, that on May 4th, the committee will be meeting with Lorraine Jobera from URI in this room at 6:00. It will be streamed as well, to be talking about 619, the overlay, additional ordinances that may or may not be affected by it, and if we get to it, the water, I mean, the comprehensive plan. So just wanted everyone, want to put that out there.
I'm glad you brought that up because I had two people that reached out to me about not being able to see it. But so it is going to be streamed at that meeting?
Yeah, CJ is actually going to host it for us. We took that into consideration.
Okay.
It's a motion to...
To just make this change tonight, yeah.
To amend?
Yep, to amend it based on, yep.
To add the words, or North Smithfield Land Trust?
Yeah, it's the one you gave me.
Motion to approve?
Motion to approve a change that says, under D, it should read, one member of the President Conservation Commission or North Smithfield Land Trust, and shall be appointed by the Town Council. Good.
Yeah, I was asking if you want to be, other changes?
No, well, just ignore that, strike that.
Okay, so we have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Bureau God?
Yes.
Ms. Hamilton?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Hara?
Yes.
Mr. Ogier?
Yes.
Ms. Alves?
Yes. Discussion by council voter, other action on appointments to town boards and commissions. Economic Development Commission, appointed by TA with Town Council approval. One appointment for completion of a five-year term ending 11/30/2023.
Not at this point. I would like to extend an offer to the Town Council. It's very difficult to get a business owner that's going to commit for five years. That's something we might want to review for the duration of serving on the economic development. The other thing is, it would be nice to seek out folks that have entrepreneurial, franchise experience, real estate development experience, stuff that would be in line with economic development. So hopefully, if you have some recommendations, I'd like to receive them.
So can I just ask a question? So we're not going to talk about the person in the packet who has a citation from the city of Taunton for their excellence? And then I guess I need further clarification. The Economic Development Commission, are we only looking for a small business owner?
No.
Okay.
We're looking for anybody that's at real estate development, real estate experience, franchisees, management. There is an applicant in the packet, seems like a fine person, but I don't think it would be a proper fit for economic development.
Okay.
So again, I just want to extend that invitation, if you know someone, please point them my way.
Okay, item three, Water Supply Review Committee, one member of the Conservation Commission or North Smithfield Land Trust for a completion of a term ending 1-2/2025.
So we have two applications. I don't know how the council wants to take them. I can, I don't, how do you, how do you want me to do this?
Do you want to do them one by one, or?
Yeah, or we can...
You want to do them together?
Let's do them together. I know we've done that in the past as well. So do you want me to read both?
Sure.
So the first one is Robert Gillette, and who serves currently on the Conservation Commission. And then the other member is, potential member would be Paul Soars, who serves on the North Smithfield Land Trust and has also served on the Conservation Commission in the past.
So let me just ask a question. So potentially for right now, would Paul Soars have to be the alternate because the, because we haven't amended it yet to say? Oh, you have, you have the Land Trust now?
No, we have amended it, it can be...
Okay, so now one's going to be an alternate at some point, okay.
No, I think you all know Mr. Sears.
Soars?
Soars, yeah. He's been very active in that element for a long time. And the newbie is taking a good interest. I think both are good. One has a little more expertise, we're not going to be around here forever, and then the line comes forward. So there are, there's, at this time, one position. Am I right?
Right, right now, there's room one.
Not offending anybody, I nominate Mr. Soars, that position, because of his background. And I don't, if things had been different a few years back, he would have never left. So he's coming back, he can share his knowledge, and if ever there is a time where there's an alternate, et cetera, I'll be knocking on people's doors that show a real interest now. So I'd like to nominate for the position. And many people, you know him from, from past practice.
So do you want to do a roll call for each one? Is there any other discussion? Do you want to do a roll call for each one?
Yeah, that's what you want, yeah.
All right, so, is that how we do it?
Well, I can make a suggestion. In the past, what we've done is we just, all right, Mr. Soars has a nomination, he goes up on the board, then you make, if anybody else wants to make another nomination, they go up on the board, and then we go back to the top. Is there a second? Then you roll call the top.
That's one way. But you need a second to have a roll call.
Well, I think, I think Claire did second, right?
No, Claire made the nomination.
Oh, she nominated, okay. Is there a second?
Mr. Soars?
Second.
Now I would say if there's any other nominations.
Are there any other nominations?
I'd like to nominate Bob Gillette, Robert Gillette.
Is there a second?
Now a second. Are there any seconds?
Okay, so now do roll call for the first one.
Now do roll call, you got two seconds? They could do roll call and they either vote for one or the other.
Okay. All right, so roll call, please.
For who?
You decide which one you want to...
Oh, goes back to the top for Mr. Soars, then?
No, you say which one you want.
Ah, there are two nominations on the floor.
You know, I've been dreading, I got this packet on, and I've been dreading this vote.
Me, too.
Absolutely.
I know.
It's confusing.
Nice flip.
All right, so now you just vote for the person. Okay, roll call.
Who are we doing roll call for?
We're just going to say the name.
They're going to say who they want.
I'd just like the second one thing for discussion, I know there's a second discussion. Bobby, it's, I just feel Mr. Soars got a raw deal a few, a couple of years ago, and I'm just thrilled to see him back in the game, so it's...
And we're saying this openly, because you're jumping into everything with both feet.
Okay, roll call, please.
Mr. Bureau God?
For Mr. Soars? Is that, is that...
You're just going to say the person, yeah.
Yes.
Mr. Soars.
Mr. Soars.
I think Joanne should just say the names, and then we just say the name of who we're going to vote for.
All right, it's confusing, okay.
All right, so Ms. Hamilton?
Mr. Soars.
Mrs. O'Hara?
Mr. Soars.
Mr. Ogier?
Mr. Soars.
Ms. Alves?
Mr. Soars.
See, I could have voted for Bobby and Mr. Soars, I still would have gone, I'm sorry.
So now the next meeting will have the revised...
I'm hoping the next meeting, if the council will indulge, is to make the Conservation Commission the alternate position. So we'll look to have that one. So David, I'll reach out to you to draft that.
We'll get it done.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, resignation from North Smithfield Senior Center Advisory Committee, Melissa Smith. All right, so I just wanted to take note that we received this resignation from Melissa Smith, and if we can just send out a thank you like we normally do?
Absolutely.
Thank you. Discussion by council voter, other action on contract amendment number three for townwide roadway improvements for professional consulting engineering services with Par Corporation. Mr. Pendergast?
I'm looking for approval to, I believe it's contract amendment number three for Par, to continue the improvements to our roadways. In particular, they will be finalizing plans for Pound Hill Road. It's the section of Pound Hill Road from Great Road to Industrial Drive, badly needed. It's been held off for a couple of years because of the detouring of the bridge construction work. So we're going to hopefully have enough money, if not, we'll go into the next fiscal year. And then we always throw a couple of smaller streets into the mix. And the example I use all the time is that we may have like $40,000 left over or $50,000. So we're having them finalize plans for Lester Street and Laurel Lane. The contract amount is $44,859.
And when would they begin this? Do you have any idea?
This, the plans would have to be finalized first, and then we'd have to see if there's any drainage work that has to be done. So it's probably going to go into the next fiscal year.
Okay.
We still have to complete Pound Hill Road from Pine Hill Court into, I call it, the old crazy S circle by the recycling place on Pound Hill Road, further down. That's, that's getting ready to go any time now.
It's so Rhode Island, isn't it?
It's more than, it's more than an S.
Thank you. All right, any further discussion or questions? Anyone like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve contract amendment number three and roadway improvements for Pound Hill Road, from old Pound Hill Road to Great Road, Laurel Lane and Lester Street, in the amount of $44,859.
Second.
And authorized execution?
And authorized execution.
We have a motion and a second? Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Bureau God?
Yes.
Ms. Hamilton?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Hara?
Yes.
Mr. Ogier?
Yes.
Ms. Alves?
Yes. Discussion by council voter, other action on approval of contract with Rhode Island Resource Recovery Corporation, RIRRC, for solid waste recycling. Mr. Pendergast?
This is, it's the only show in town, actually. It's a new two-year contract with Rhode Island Resource Recovery. The tipping fees, in particular, the two items or the three items that I look at, are the next fiscal year, we're going to $58.50 per ton. We presently pay $54 a ton. And then in the year 24, 25, it'll go to $63, both with $4 and $50 increases. And the other excess cap number that I am always watching, it goes from $100 to next year, $115, and then it stays at $115 for the life of the two-year contract. Those are really the highlights of the contract.
What is that cap?
If we go over our tonnage, where every community has only allocated so much tonnage of trash. So whatever that number is, if we go over, then we have to start paying. We haven't gone, we haven't gone over. We're there, we're close. Ever since COVID, everybody feels the need to throw everything in the house out. And our recycling rates dropped. So my recycling coordinator, she was just able to get a grant through Rhode Island Resource Recovery, and a grant for a couple of things, but we're going to start educating the public again, and we're going to try to get back into the schools that we did years ago when Donna Kahler was here. And she did a tremendous job. She actually would go in the dumpster at the high school and open up the trash bags and go to the superintendent and say, you're in violation. So fantastic times when I would get phone calls from her. She's in the dumpster, literally in the dumpster. But we're finding out that people just don't know how to recycle. They throw water bottles away with half, half-filled water, and then I get a fine from Resource Recovery because it's wet. So I, so we're going to try an educational program. When the taxes go out, we're going to put something in there for them. But right now, this is the two-year contract that we have to execute and have the administrator sign.
So I guess that answers my next question. I was going to ask, like, what kind of rebates have we been receiving?
The rebates we get, if we attain a certain level on our recycling rate, is a dollar or $2, depending on what, where we fall off the tonnage.
And have we been receiving any, or?
Yeah, the last couple of years we have. But I've noticed this year, our tonnage has gone from 31% down to 25%, which personally, I'm not happy with that.
All right, any further discussion? Anyone like to make a motion?
Make a motion to approve the contract with RIRRC in the amount of, well, just the set-upon rates as reviewed by the Director of Public Works. Do I need to read the rates?
The contract, actually, there's a lot of other numbers in there, but those are the three highlighted numbers. But the contract spells it right out. It's, it's the same for every community.
So then just approve the contract as reviewed by the Finance Director and the Director of Public Works?
That'd be fine.
And signature?
And authorized to execute.
Please.
All right, we have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Bureau God?
Yes.
Ms. Hamilton?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Hara?
Yes.
Mr. Ogier?
Yes.
Ms. Alves?
Yes. Item eight, discussion by council voter, other action on bid for Hallwell abatement and demolition. Mr. Pendergast?
Okay. Finally, we're going to come to a conclusion on the buildings, the 11 buildings down at Hallwell. We went out to bid, we had two reputable companies submit bids. AA Abestis Abatement came in at five hundred and forty-four thousand eight, eight twenty. And the, the other one was JR Vinagro, came in at seven hundred and thirty-three thousand two hundred and forty-four and forty cents. My recommendation is to go with AA Abestis Abatement of Hotford, Hotford Ave. Johnston as the lowest qualified and responsive bidder at five hundred and forty-four thousand eight hundred and twenty dollars. I think the Finance Director's gonna have to help, help me out on this one. There were funds left over. And then I think we're gonna have to take something out of surplus to meet this five hundred and forty-four thousand goal.
Are we gonna take it out of surplus or are we gonna budget for it in capital?
It's up to Town Council on how you guys wanna proceed either way. I, my suggestion is we take it out of fund. Looking at the bond one fifty-two, there's approximately three hundred and twenty-three thousand pending any ongoing invoices and purchase requisitions. There, obviously, from there, we would need about another two hundred grand. So it, like I said, is up to Council on how we wanna proceed with budgeting that.
Didn't we discuss a prior meeting about getting it from reserves and so it wouldn't have an effect on the taxes?
Yeah.
We did, yeah.
So do you want a vote on that tonight or?
Please.
Well, I thought we had to, we have to, we have to put a resolution. We have to, it has to be a separate agenda item to move the money out of the fund balance.
So you want me to create a resolution for it?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, because we don't have that.
They discussed, right.
Okay.
All right. So do you need a motion to approve this contract?
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the contract with AA Abestor Abatement Company for the demolition and abatement of Hallwell with a scope of work totaling five hundred and forty-four thousand eight hundred and twenty dollars. The funding for this project will be in FY twenty-four and we'll have two funding sources as we just discussed. And authorization for the administrator to sign.
Did that include foundations? Yeah, no?
You have a second?
Second.
What'd you say, Jeff?
I was asking if it included foundations and he said it does. I think that's pretty good.
Uh, we have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Bureau God?
Yes.
Ms. Hamilton?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Hara?
Yes.
Mr. Ogier?
Yes.
Ms. Alves?
Yes.
Thank you. I, I just wanna add, when we were doing this RFP, I put in for the abatement and demolition in, in this document. And I know we listened to a lot of crazy numbers that were flying all over the place, over a million. So when these bids came out and we, we went through the whole thing, I was very satisfied. AA is probably the biggest demolition company with Vinagro in the, in the state and their number was right on. I mean, we have an Abestis Abatement number of two hundred and seventy-one thousand, so that kinda tells you where, where they're at, so.
And, and again, Mr. Pendergast, do you know when this would be?
I can, I can pull that, I, I can, that's why I mean, depending on how the funding source goes, I mean, I now have to get the six-month permitting through our IDOH now. Because I was, the last one expired and I was told by them, wait until the construction is ready to begin and then we'll issue that, that new pit permit. So that I don't, I don't do it now and they say, we're gonna see you in September. So I'm kinda back, I'm backing into that part of it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item F, discussion by Council vote on other action on procedures for appointments to boards and commissions. Mrs. O'Hara?
For those. For those sitting here, when it comes around to appointing people to different commissions, we get applications, sometimes one. Person comes, there's no others. Okay, let's give another, a little more time. Still the only, it's the only one that puts in for it. They come, they're timed, they sit, and then people go out saying, put your name, put your name, you know, hey, it's, it's a good group. So these people who spent all this time are not even considered. It's discouraging people for applying. They may be new. The other person's your friend. But we must give it a certain time. If it is the only one, we, others say, we'll freeze it. We have to do something. There was a woman that came here and sat patiently and those were long meetings. Next week, only one on, only one that continues name to be considered, we didn't choose anybody. So we either, when we're, set something up. I'll tell you, if I were in the town and I found out this is how it works, why go? Why do it? That's my opinion. I'd like your input, but it, it's, I think it's unfair.
So Claire, are you just asking that we make it a requirement that people attend?
No, make a said a time. Give it a month, two meetings. And if that's the only person, we have to decide, we need so many people or put that person on the committee.
I, I know, I know the incident you're talking about, Claire. It was Ariana Ramos was, was here. She, she waited.
And she was qualified.
We chose, she was very qualified. We chose not, decision was made to not appoint, even though she had her application in. And then the next week, another resident had their application in along with Ariana, who got hers in, in a timely manner. And that other resident was chosen over Ariana.
And then we had only one person and they voted. One person. They didn't wait two more meetings.
I'm okay with making it a requirement, but you, we need to communicate it, but I'm gonna push back a little bit because when I was no longer on the council, I applied for the Budget Committee. I attended every meeting on Zoom during the height of COVID with an infant newborn at home. The risk, I didn't wanna risk that to my wife, who had just given birth. I didn't wanna risk that to my toddler. And so I attended and, no offense, Claire, you voted no. And John, I believe you voted no. No hot feelings. I understand. But we need to be accepting then of how are people participating? Because they could be watching in live stream and they could have a young family at home and I get it.
As long as we know this.
I get it, but I just think the expectation needs to be clearly communicated that.
There was no.
You have to attend one of the next two council meetings.
Doesn't even have to attend. It's wrong to get a form in.
Well, even if it's not an actual requirement, it should be heavily considered that somebody was actually here with their application in a timely manner and we passed because we wanted to wait. I think we waited for another application to come in and she never got the opportunity. That, I know, that's, I'm familiar with the incident and I did vote for you the second time.
There's no application.
You did, you did. I appreciate it.
Well, I think it was, I think it was three times.
Took three times, yeah. I appreciate it.
I think now we're, now we're kinda stepping on our toes because we have a situation tonight where someone's been sitting here all night.
Exactly, right.
And we didn't select him. So I, I, I think we, I think we, are we saying it depends who it is because somebody's sitting here tonight and we didn't pick him?
Well, there was a combination, right? Claire, she had, she was sitting here and she had her application in a timely manner.
And she was very qualified.
But the same situation tonight.
But, but it's true, but Mrs. Soars did also have his application in.
Right, but he's not sitting here. So.
I, I, I think.
How are we gonna do this if we're gonna say?
Well, you shouldn't put anything in stone right now.
No, I mean, there's reasons people can't make it. It doesn't mean they're not gonna make the meetings.
Yeah, but the application isn't even in for a month.
It should be considered.
Yeah, and I think, I mean, obviously it was considered. It just didn't go in that favor, but.
And we have another situation with the administrator. We have a, you know, someone who applied and he's choosing not to, right? But that's his prerogative, right? So otherwise, he would be required to have that person.
But where I'm coming from is that this is the only applicant. There's no other applicants. And, and I'm glad to see younger and younger people come forward. And I've seen this husband and wife team, once it's there, I can see they come to the meeting, they're becoming really involved. And to me, that makes a difference. And I, I'm thinking, gee, do we have like a step up position, uh, and even by attending the meetings as time goes on?
I, I agree. And to a point, and what happened too.
I just don't want to discover.
What was unfortunate with Ariana was, all right, so that's politics. She didn't get on. Then another spot opened up and she submitted her application again and a different person that wasn't even in on the application process and the first time put in. And again, Ariana was overlooked and, and the, the position went to somebody else. I think we should just try to be a little more fair, that's all. We, we don't have to come up with rules or regulations or anything, but we should try to dish these out with a little more fairness.
Yeah, and I, I think, I think that has to go, you know, it's well said to everyone, you know?
Absolutely.
Everyone has to be open-minded because, you know, some people pick other people for other reasons. So I think, you know, it's kinda for everyone, so.
Should be best qualified always.
Is that it, Claire?
Absolutely. Thank you for listening.
Any other discussion on this? Uh, G, discussion by Council vote on other action on Signal Works Architecture, two thousand twenty-three construction estimates for two thousand fourteen. Voter-approved renovation of police station. Ms. Hamilton?
Yeah, I won't take very much time. I just feel a moral obligation to ask the council if they would allow the individual Eric Army, who is the owner of Signal Works Architecture, which was, I can't remember the name of it before. But they had submitted a construction estimate for the renovation of the North Smithfield Police Department back in two thousand fourteen. Went to the voters. It was approved. The vote was a two-question vote for renovation of this building as well as the police station. The estimates came in about seven hundred thousand dollars more and were summarily dismissed as on, you know, not, not valuable anymore. So my question is, and I, you know, I'll, I'll be looking into this as well, but a couple of questions. I don't feel that we're helping our own causes by having people take votes and in the democratic process and then we don't do anything. Like if we had put something toward it, right? I think there would have been a good faith effort, right? But there was nothing used in a voter-approved scenario. So my next question is, I guess to all of you. Can we get Eric Army back here to give us an updated version of what current cost would be for renovation? And then when we get a, an estimate, which we don't even have a proposal yet from, from Tecton, to get an estimate of a one-story police station. If the, if the numbers come in close to each other, then I think people would want to have a new police station. If they don't, then I think we owe them the opportunity to at least weigh in on that. So I'm asking what everyone else thinks.
Well, if I may?
Please.
Did you wanna go?
No, no, go ahead.
Just to keep things in perspective, I, I don't think that, that's a wise decision. Reason being, the architect that we have now built, has built over a hundred police stations. At the time, Mr. Army has had no experience in building police stations. And also, the PBIC at the time, the people at the time were losing faith in Mr. Army. And I have the minutes right over here that, that does show that they were losing faith in him and they wanted to actually remove him from the position. And I have that right over here in the minutes and I'll be welcome to, I, I mean, I'd be happy to share them with you if you just give me one second. You can see based on the comments that the chairperson of the PBIC made, also Dan Jewbert, who was the project manager. He was also losing faith in Mr. Army. And also the planning, uh, the chairperson of the PBIC and Mr. Jewbert both came to the conclusion at the, towards the end of the, the, the time on the committee that we needed to go with a new building, that the remodel was not the best way to go. And they stated in these minutes right over here, and I'll be happy to share that with you very quickly. These are not all of them. I will make all the minutes available to whoever wants them, but the ones that I highlighted just kinda make, shows my point. Said Dan did an estimate and gave it to Paula, that was you, and Jason, the day before he signed his contract, he stated the project would cost six point one million dollars back then. Dan, that's Dan Jewbert, worked with Mike, I'm not sure which Mike that is, Roseanne and Jason to come up with a more workable scope. That means they had to get rid of some things. Now here's the part about, Jason states that Eric did not design a project that was within our budget. Why is a project forty percent over budget? Roseanne thought that Dan's idea of making Kendall Dean, is, this is very important, that making Kendall Dean, primarily the school department, build a new separate police station and turn Bushy into a municipal building. So Roseanne, the chairperson of the committee at that point, by December twenty-second, two thousand sixteen, had already decided that a new police station was the way to go. Dan spoke with the police department and there were things that they would like to see happen that Eric did not do. Dan reduced the scope, which meant he, he cut things out. Joe states that Dan is acting as a true owners' representative as opposed to Studio Major. John, I believe that's John Flaherty, asked if the board were willing to ask the council for surplus to keep the building projects at full scope. They knew they didn't go out for enough money and they had to, they wanted to come back to the council to ask for more money. The bond was doomed from the beginning. These people, the, all the people on the PBIC were good people. They were hard-working people, but they were actually given an impossible task. And this is important right here. Dan states that the bones of Bushy School are not good. There is a problem with the brick face of the building. If he cleans it up, the brick face will need to be repaired again. There are roof issues that cannot be done, oh, that cannot be done to bring Bushy to a forty-year building. Possibly in the future, a new metal building with a brick facade could be built in the future. Again, they already resigned themselves that they needed a new building. John wants to know why nobody talked about the usefulness of Bushy earlier, but Dan states that Eric did not wanna hear it and no feasibility study was performed. This is not the company that we wanna come back in. We have a great company that, I would like to, once again, I'll share, I'll be happy to share these minutes. But it's clear that the PBIC itself was losing confidence in Studio Major and I don't see the point of bringing him back in.
Well, I think, I think a lot of the, you know, the excerpts you took out probably had to do with the total project as opposed to just the police department.
Nope, I didn't. It was, it's all separated here. It's all separated here by the police station and what they're talking about.
Over six million. Just for the police station. It was three point two. But we had sign off by seventeen members of the community, the police department, the police chief. We met months and months and months and months. We had parks and recs. We had everyone involved, anyone who could possibly be touched by that. And they signed off. Everybody signed off on it. The police chief signed off on it. Everyone, the captain signed off on it. And there were, you know, it, it was a well-thought-out option. And it is, I think, it is our responsibility as fiduciaries of people's money to at least let them know if there is another option available to them, right? I mean, if, if there's something that they can afford and they're willing to vote on it, then I think it's our responsibility to at least provide them with accuracy before they make any decision. And I'm just asking for him to just come back and talk to us. And if we find that, you know, the cost is exorbitant or they're too close to what the one story is, then that's the end of it.
But Paula, my, my problem is though, the PBIC itself was losing faith in Eric Army at that time. And now six and a half years later, we wanna bring him back?
Well, I, I don't know.
I got it right here. It's all in the minutes. It's all in the minutes.
I don't know if they were losing faith.
He does not have the floor.
We're still.
All right, we can't, we can't. So I think regardless of what Task Force was looking at, I think it's important that we at least tell the people that may not be here, that may not have been involved in it then, and those who are going to be voting in November on a potential new building, that there was something. And, you know, if we don't provide people with an opportunity to at least weigh in on that, I think we're doing them a great disservice. We, they voted. They voted and we never did anything with it. And, you know, maybe those, some of those things are true, right?
Whether they're true or not, they're on paper. I don't know if they're true. I can only tell you what I'm reading.
But the problem is, we never made any effort to provide the public with what they thought they were voting on. And how are we gonna ask them to come? And how are we going to ask them to come back and do something like that again if we're not even being honest that there is something out there that could possibly assist them in making an intelligent decision?
So where did, how did, how did we go from PBIC to the MBRTF? I don't, do you, do you know that?
Yeah, I was there at the time.
They were dismissed.
I don't know how that happened.
Okay, so what happened was, Paul, correct me, help me with the history, if I've got the history wrong, but what happened was, towards the, after the election.
And this was what?
In 2016.
Okay.
After the election in 2016, I attended a couple of meetings and there was a lot of discussion about.
This is PBIC you attended?
Nope, nope, council meetings.
Oh, oh.
Okay, and there was a lot of questions and there was a lot of accusations flying around and it was a disaster. And I'm not knocking the people at PBIC, like I said, they were all good people wanting to do the best for the town, but things weren't working out. I think they started to realize, the wheels started to come off and they started to realize that they were tasked to put a square peg into a round hole. And there was a lot of accusations being thrown around by council members and, and members of, it was, it got really ugly. So what we did was, we disbanded the PBIC and we created the Building Review Committee. Because apparently the PBIC was, I, I think that they, they went into this thinking that they would be able to do more than what they found out that they were going to be able to accomplish.
So I would like to ask the council again to allow him to come and just give us an updated current amount on what the project was and we can make a decision whether to even entertain it further after that.
Have you contacted Mr. Army?
I have.
And he'd be willing to do that?
Mm-hmm.
Is there a fee involved?
I think he would, he said if we could authorize up to $2,000 for that, it would have to be a new scope.
I would also like to see what his qualifications are as far as designing a police station.
Well, okay, designing a police station or designing.
Oh, it's a bit different than what you're designing in the scope of building or anything else.
Right, and we had, but we had sign off by the police chief and the police on this particular thing. So that was tantamount to what, how the decision was being made, you know, not, they were intimately involved in every single meeting we had with that large 17-member committee. So it isn't that they are unaware of the things that were going to be put forth in that project.
Well, I guess one of my questions about the architect and, I don't know the architect. You know, we look at what we just criticized for our grant writer, right, with qualifications. And I know a lot of other communities come along when they built their police station, the firm that they used has a separate section dedicated for public safety complexes. And so it is a, another animal all unto itself in terms of how you design them. And I do wonder if Eric would have passed the qualifications of the RFP standards today. You know, if he had never designed a potential police station, would he have scored higher than say a Tecton or another firm out there? When I was on the council the last time, I know I did ask to get updated estimates from 2014, I'm okay with doing that. I know, I believe Tecton looked at that, but then added an addition, I believe, to it. I was off the council, so I, I think, you know, it may be good to get updated numbers only of what a straight renno would look like, only then, especially as we talk about a, you know, whether it's a single story or double story, if they come more online, it may say, hey, the, the new building makes more sense at that point. You know, because if it was $6 million back then, that, closer to inflation nowadays, you're probably looking at it more like a $10 million police station.
That was the total project cost.
Right, so I don't, right, but just, you know, tonight, so, without having other documentation in front to look at. So, you know, I'm, I'll leave it up to the council to decide, but, you know, those are just some of the things going through my head right now.
You know, the thing that I worry about all the time is that we have an obligation to get this done. And if for some reason, this particular version of what Tecton has been providing us, so say we, we decide on the one story as opposed to the two-story, right? And what if it fails? We have no plan B, you know, and Mr. Vadnay has said, no, we have no plan B, we're not even thinking of that. But I'm thinking of that and I'm thinking how that could strap people, you know, let's say it's 17, 18 million dollars. You know, we need to know what, what's being retired and everything else. So maybe, like I said before, I said it, I feel like I'm a broken record, maybe there is a possibility that it's going to be a wash, you know, with retirement and some, some bonds that we have right now. But what if it fails? I mean, right, you've said that before too and I'm like, then we have to start again. And these poor people are going to be in this dilapidating as we sit here, it's falling apart even more. And then to your point, you know, and I don't agree with you a lot, but I agree with you many times on things. And one thing that Mr. Birgott said, and I agree 100%, is we're putting a million dollars
Yeah.
into a building that potentially will be knocked down.
Right.
It, it, it's like fingernails on a blackboard for me, really, it, it grates at me so much. So if we, if we have this possibility in November and we, you know, we have this resolution and we get everything, all the legislative stuff done, and then it fails, I don't know what everybody thinks we're going to do next.
Have to wait and start all over again.
But that's a big undertaking again, and if we have something, and if it, I mean, what's the harm of having him come back and just tell us? If we don't think he's, like, you know, maybe this, maybe now, like you're saying, the RFPs and the things and the qualifications are different now and we would have a different opinion, but to have him come back and just talk to us, I don't think that's a bad decision.
I think the qualifications now are going to be even tougher.
Well, and you know what?
I think it is. And I wouldn't even ask for another sum until you find out what has he done similar to this project. It's like someone builds a first house, and they can make mistakes here and there, but this is beyond that.
When the PBIC, when the, when the Building Review Committee started, everybody on the Building Review Committee would have loved the idea if we could have just simply renovated the building. And it was looked into at length. And it was determined, that we came up with the same conclusion that the members of the PBIC came up with back then, is that it's not practical to, to turn that bill, to renovate that building and turn it into a police station.
Well.
There was no personal agenda, nobody benefits by building a police station, but it was just a decision, the way they decided that was the best way to go.
I think we still could have put some money into it just to keep it going, because now I think we're so far behind, because now we've, you know, with all the weather for the last, you know, four, six years, that we probably could have started repairing over the years. It might not be as bad of the shape it's in now, but it's really been neglected for how many years, I mean, but, I mean, yeah, I, I think if you have him submit his qualifications and then we just talk to him, at least we can get an idea of what renovations may cost versus the new station, because we do have to have a plan.
We do have a plan, we do have, one of the things that the architect that's on now is, what was his name?
Tecton.
Tecton, one of the things that Tecton did do is they, they talked about renovating that building and what it would cost to renovate that building.
Well, with an addition though, I mean, you know, not just renovating the building as it is, and it was renovation with a pretty good-sized addition, which is not apples to apples, right? So I, I'm just, I'm just trying to be as good as possible to the people that I serve and provide them with an opportunity that in the unlikely event, after everything we do to try to get this off the ground in November, we don't, and what to do after that.
So another question I have, I'm just processing, sorry, so another question I have is, after 10 years and the state of the building that it is in now, would those plans even still be valid?
That's the question we need to know.
That's one of the question I would need to know, because we, as you just said, Paula, we're sinking a million dollars into a building that's probably either going to be torn down or we renovated, or who knows what it looks like, you know, that, that million dollars you're going to have to tack on to the initial cost of whatever the estimate is right now. And then the other question I have from a procedural thing is, after so much time, would you have to rebid this thing? So even if another architect came in and said, it's going to cost you this, I just ran the numbers I did 10 years ago through the computer, would you have to rebid it? It's like, do those last forever or is there a time limit on them?
Obviously, if you, it's an unusual question, but obviously if you're starting from scratch, you'd have to go out to rebid. These numbers wouldn't mean anything and wouldn't have, you wouldn't be able to use those numbers and go forward, you'd have to rebid.
But then you would be able to use those numbers in an election, is that what, so.
I don't know how you use those numbers in an election.
Because they're not, they're not factual, right, because we don't have the bids, it's only someone's word.
I guess you could use those numbers, but if you don't have enough money after the referendum is passed, you'd be back to where.
You're back to where you are now.
You'll have a situation where you don't have enough money, I guess, but. I, I don't, I don't know the answer to that question because it's so many, not really a legal question, it's a mathematical question. What will the numbers mean and how will they compare to a new bid?
Yeah.
I don't know.
Okay, folks, what do you think?
Can.
Let's continue on the same path we were on, let's not deviate at, at the last minute. And as far as, there's going to be even more structural, the trust went in. A building has to be ready to go and, for them to say, you can't stay in here. They'd be responsible. And you're talking how many years ago?
Yeah, but Claire, they're going to be in that building, let's say this, this passes in November, they'll be in that building another good two years.
Yeah.
So, I mean, that's, that's really not.
Yeah, and if we don't do the thing, then. I want to see what his credentials, as far as the first one going around, you know, this town always goes the cheapest way. And what happens to save a few bucks?
That's a lot, though.
A lot of problems.
I'm sure Mr. Army is a very good architect in his field, I'm sure he, he's, he's a good business, he's probably a good businessman, a good architect. But his specialty is not police stations. You want to hire an electrician to do plumbing, you hire, you know what I mean?
He can renovate, you, you can renovate a building, like this was not a town hall, right? And look now, it was a school forever and now it's a town hall and it's great, right? So you can renovate a building, Tecton is, is building a new police station, right? That's a, that's totally like apples and oranges, right? And, and that's my point, is that we're not even giving people who voted on something an opportunity to have this resurrected at all. And to me, that's, I just think it's morally, we're morally bankrupt if we don't do that.
You know, you would be right, but I think that what the people voted on is not what they would have gotten, okay? They would have got, they were getting a scaled-down version, the police, the police department was not getting what they said, like, it's in the minutes here. And I didn't, I didn't, I didn't write these minutes myself, I just, I just pushed print. Things were not as promised, okay? We were supposed to get a bunch of roads, we didn't get a bunch of roads, we were supposed to get, that bond was doomed from the beginning.
Well, yeah, and you're right, also this building was supposed to house a school department and that didn't happen too. So there's a lot of stuff that went wrong, but you know what, I don't care. I don't care because we can talk about this till the cows come home. I, I'm just asking if we can have him come back and give us an idea and I'll get his qualifications, I'll, you know, we'll do everything that, that's necessary just so that we have an option. And if everyone feels after, you know, not even good, don't even want to talk to him, don't even want to go any further, then that's fine. But I'll feel like I've done my due diligence and people that voted in 2014 will have at least, will at least know that the government listens to them.
Put it to a vote, we're just, we're just beating a horse when it's down, we can't kill it anymore. Put it to a vote, put, put it to a vote.
All right, did you make a motion?
I'd like to make a motion to have, to authorize up to $2,000 to have Eric Army come back and give us a, an updated version. I wanted the voter, 2023 construction estimates for 2014 voter-approved renovation of the police station.
Plus his letter of qualifications?
Yes.
Okay. There's a motion, is there a second?
A second for discussion. I think the qualifications is going to be really important, because, you know, another example I hear people come to me with is, you know, the North Attleboro Police Station, right? But that was developed by, that was designed by a firm that had public safety design experience. And so I, I am, again, I've been on the record of saying I'm for getting the bids, you know, the quotes updated. You know, I think it would almost be fair to Tecton to say, hey, if we didn't do an addition, what would the cost be to have a comparison? You know, we've gone into this conversation in the past as a council, like, we only have one side. And so, you know, Tecton did it, the update with the renovation, but what does it look like without the addition added on? You know, just straight renno, what would the cost be? I'm sure they have those numbers available. But I think the qualification piece is important, because I would hate for us to be in this situation again. And, you know, be short money and now we're, you know, I think, you know, Mr. Vadnay said that some communities, you know, they're on the hook for millions of dollars because they under-budgeted and they just didn't understand the intricacies and the costs that went into it. So we have no idea what the state of that building is even in, we assume a million dollars, it could be more, they keep saying, until they get in there, they won't really know, so. You know, if he can waive the, the $2,000, let's ask him.
We'll have Tecton to do the same thing then, because you almost got, you almost got a one-story price, but now we have to wait for another proposal, so.
Well, I imagine that if this did, if it did fail at the ballot in November, that we would be asking Tecton for a price to renovate.
Well, I think we should, I think we should be asking them for that now, so when we do a ballot question, we can know what kind of dollar amount we're looking for, you know, so I.
What do you mean, there'll be two questions on the ballot?
No, but I.
Didn't the bond council say like not to exceed, like, spend between this and this, you know, and then we make the decision? So at least we would have that range, so we know like what dollar amount we're, because we have no idea what a renovation would be, just strictly renovate without any additions. But we know what, I mean, even the, the new build as a one-story, it's not going to come in that much less, because it's, it was, wasn't that much less square footage. And like you were saying, now there's more roofing and there's more, so it's probably not going to be a whole lot different than the, the last one that he gave us, so. But, I mean, at least, at least we would have that, that scale, that if we had to ask the voters to spend up to what amount, we would know which direction we would be going in, I guess.
But wouldn't the bond question, the ballot, wouldn't it be on the ballot specifically for a new police station or would it just be money spent?
It's money spent, right? It's money spent, not to exceed like 15 million dollars, say. And then we would have the, then by resolution, I think we determine how we want to spend that money. And I think according to bond council, I went back and watched the tape, according to bond council, if we were to say authorize, say, not to exceed 20 million, the council could then pass a resolution at the same time that says, say the project's 12 million, we're only going to spend 15. And it cuts off the remaining $5 million, so we have flexibility after. But I think that's what Mr. Vadnay has been saying, is you got to get the money and know the, the total amount you're going to ask for, because you can always revise down after.
Mr. Vadnay was telling you what bond council was advising you, that you could go to a commission, ask for an actual amount of money, you don't have to spend the maximum.
Yeah, I was giving you credit, Paul, but yes, bond council.
Because there are always some unexpected.
Right, no, I know, I know you're speaking for it.
All right, so we have a motion and we have a second, any further discussion?
Can, can I just ask Mr. Vadnay if Tecton would be willing to just give a price of just a renovation?
You can ask him and they, they're going to give you a proposal?
Yeah, it's part of the, yeah, it's part of your update. Mike, this can be open forum at the end.
Follow the rules. Number one, what the council authorized on Wednesday night going forward and getting pricing was following the wish of the voters, that is the bond money that they approved for the renovations, the million dollars, that's what we're addressing, number one. Number two, the issue of going out to hire an architect, the solicitor, correct me if I'm wrong, if you want to hire an architect, you have to issue an RFQ. You can't designate, we want to hire this person, you have to issue an RFQ in order to hire an architect or an engineer today under the new procurement rules. It can't be tailored to one person. So the qualifications is key, you have to issue a request for qualifications, scope of work, and the whole list of things, the qualifications, a grading criteria. a grading criteria, and the whole bit. And that's how you award it. So, you can't just say, we want to hire this firm to do this. You can't do that anymore. Correct me if I'm wrong, David.
With regards to the money, right?
So, even at the.
But there was a vote.
Even at the two.
And people voted. There was a vote, and people voted on that, right? So, my question, I guess, would be to bond council, if there's a vote taken and people vote on it, and then it's postponed for 10 years, as it has been.
It hasn't been postponed.
Is it still, is it still valid? Is that vote still valid?
Yes.
Yes, well, then, that's my point.
I, I just have one quick question, not to interject the back and forth.
You've since let Studio Major go. I didn't.
Neither did I.
I didn't. Well, you were the, you were the administrator.
No, I wasn't.
Ms. Alz was on the council, Mr. Zelinski was on the council, Mr. Soli, Rosanado, and Bob Boucher were on the council when they cut this project. They're the ones that cut the project for a number of reasons. The biggest reason, the biggest reason that they cut the whole project was the OPM violated the purchasing procedures, and you had to throw out all the bids. They had no choice.
But it wasn't because of negligence on anyone's part or having.
I didn't say that.
No, but I'm just, the implication is that it was a horrible thing, and they had to throw it out.
They had to. You violated, you violated competitive bidding process.
Mr. Buergaard just explained the timeline very succinctly and how that the people that were previously on the PBIC were then replaced by MBRTF.
The MBRTF was tasked with doing a full report of the project and the shortcomings and, and whatnot. And it was dated, it needed to be done by April 17th, and we met that, and the council had, well, maybe you don't, but the town has that report, full report of the whole project.
Okay, so.
Now, the town borrowed $5.2 million to renovate the police station and Kendall Dean School. And that's currently what you addressed on Wednesday, was the remaining funds of that to renovate. No one here likes it. Trust me. Nobody here likes spending that million dollars on that building. Nobody. But that's what the voters wanted, and that's where we are today.
The voters wanted a functional police station, and they have a police station with a facade that's falling, and we're going to secure with a million dollars. That's not what we asked them to vote on.
But you never had enough money to do that.
Well, we could have gotten the money, but that's, that's to me over the, over the.
Paul, can I ask a question real quick?
Yeah.
To the solicitor. So, we're talking about an RFQ, right? So, give me a quick education on this. So, if we spend $2,000, that is allowed under the small purchasing? For him to come in and just to give the estimate update, not to go out for any new architectural plans. Is that allowed?
This is a very unusual.
That's what I'm trying to find out, the procedure you give.
I, I think if you're going to really retain Studio Major or any architect, I think we've got to, you need to put that off at least one meeting. If you're going to, for the, for the money, for the $2,000, because obviously it wasn't on the agenda. And the question that Mr. Vannay's raising is, when you hire an architect, you're supposed to go to the procurement procedure. But you're right, there is an exemption for 2,000, but I don't know if that applies to architecture.
It says construction and then the 5,000 for the other services.
That's right. It doesn't say architecture.
When you hire an architect or an engineer.
You don't hire.
But they're professional services, right?
But you don't hire them.
No?
You don't hire them.
Professional services or attorneys, or attorneys and whatnot, for whatever reason, they have changed the procurement rules. Architects and engineers need to be hired on an RFQ. You cannot hire them under professional services any longer.
You don't hire them based upon a contract amount anymore. You hire them based upon qualifications, and then you negotiate the contract.
And so, you have to put it out there and get.
That's, now, this is an unusual thing. You're asking him to give you estimates in 2023 of estimates in 2014. You know, this is just not, this is just not clear, as I sit here now, that you could spend $2,000 that way. I know you.
Okay, so if you were able to, as Mr. Ojha said, if you waived that fee and came in and just said, look, we just see the back of the envelope.
Nothing stops you from bringing someone in to have a discussion with the council, but I'm just concerned about the $2,000 right now.
All right, there we go.
Based upon this just unusual, it's a new scope of work, right? 2023 numbers is a different scope of work. It's not, got anything to do with the original contract at all. It really doesn't, right? The original contract started in '14, is over in '16.
So, if, if Ms. Hamilton speaks to him and he's willing to come in, we can just put him on the agenda and then listen to him, and, and that's it? We're not hiring anyone? We're not?
No, we're not hiring. We're not hiring. I don't want to hire him.
Well, it may be perceived as a contract for hiring, because you're, you're paying him to come in and do.
Right, but if we don't pay him, if he is willing to come in.
A pro bono.
With his qualifications and.
Nothing stops you from doing that. It's, it's about the $2,000 in my mind right now.
All right, well, that, thank you. I appreciate that.
Okay.
And, and again, I'd be happy to research it to see if you could do that. I just, it's just not a, it's not a question that was on the agenda. I did ask if there were any questions, I would, would get there, but that's.
Right, so should we rescind that motion and maybe make it in a different manner, saying if he's willing to come in? I mean, or do we even?
Yeah, I think I would ask you to do that.
Do we even need to make a motion?
Yeah, anybody can put him, put him on the agenda, right? I mean, you don't need to have a council vote to put him on the agenda.
All right, so.
If he's not going to, it's not a matter of, of paying any kind of town funds.
So, can we just withdraw it?
Withdraw the motion for the second, and the item could be on the agenda for presentation from that company based upon what you described. What I'm reading there was 2023 construction estimates for 2014 renovation of the police station.
Okay, so is the second one a recall?
Sixteen, sixteen. It says 14 approved, it's 16 now.
But it was approved in 14, right?
I know, but the estimate.
Oh, from 16, I got you, I got you.
You know, if I could just point out one more thing to Mr. Vannay's point. The state of mind of the PBIC at the time was Joe states that the bottom line is the reduced scope with Kendall Dean, a 40-year building, and Bushy being remodeled with the remaining funds is the acceptable way to go, and that's exactly what we did. That's exactly what we did last week. We voted on the remaining funds being reused to remodel.
Well, it's not, it's not a renovation.
I agree, but they're saying right here that that's.
Well, that, and I understand, and I think we're being very technical here, but all I want to do is hear from him what the cost would be. That's it. And what I'm going to do is withdraw my motion for the 2023 construction estimates for the 2014 voter approval with the $2,000. Who had a second?
DJ.
I seconded, so I'll withdraw.
And now I'd like to make a motion.
You don't have to.
Oh, I don't have to now. Okay, I'm motionless.
Okay. The item has to be changed from 2014.
To 2016.
Presentation from that.
All right, well, thank you, everyone, for entertaining my.
Just, can I clarify something, David? The cost estimates that you have on this project were actually done by Robinson Green and Beretta, not by Studio Major. Studio Major did not do any estimating on this job. The numbers that you got in 216, in 2016, were actually bids that were presented based on documents that were put out to bid. Eric Army never did an estimate on this job.
Okay, well, let, let me pursue it then, and then I thank you all for listening to me, and I will get back to you. Thank you.
It's, it's a really convoluted process.
Well, the whole, the whole thing's convoluted to me.
Yeah, it is.
People vote, and we don't do what we're supposed to do.
Well, we are doing what, we are doing what, what you told them you would do.
I told them they'd have a police station that's functional. They really don't right now.
With no money.
Okay, we all.
Thank you so much. Appreciate it.
You never had enough, you never had enough funds to do that. But the estimates are always done by IGB. The bid documents were done, were presented on an open bid. And they were between 2.3 and 3.4 million dollars over the construction cost, not 700,000.
Okay, thank you.
The numbers, the numbers are way off, because you got to look at project costs and construction costs. And everyone looks at the 5.2 as proj, as project cost, and the construction cost came in at 6.1. The construction cost in the, in the, in the budget was 3.7. There's a big difference. It's not, oh, we just missed it. We missed it big time because we never had enough funds.
Okay, thank you. All right, next one, discussion by council voter, other action on town council acting in its capacity as Nosferfale Town Council.
This is Madam President, I think I and J need to be trailed until after executive session.
I don't think so, because this is by Mr. Buergaard and Mrs. O'Hara.
It has nothing to do with what we're talking about.
That's okay.
It has nothing to do with what we're talking about at executive session.
Thank you, though.
Thanks, David.
Good catch.
Discussion by council voter, other action on town council acting in its capacity as Nosferfale Town Council and as board of directors of the Sladeville Water Company.
Nothing, has nothing to do with it.
Probably should have ran it by the solicitor.
I promise you, it has nothing to do with it.
Sladeville Water Company to investigate expanding water lines for safe, clean drinking water and fire suppression. Mr. Buergaard and Mrs. O'Hara.
Okay, I'm almost afraid to go forward after that last agenda, but. If, if you look at what's been going on in town, what, what happened last week, we had a fire up on Providence Pike. And I talked to the chief of police, and the chief said that the fire department got there and all they could do was watch the house burn down. They couldn't do anything about it. They couldn't even get a hose from the house next door, because there was no water line. Now, I think that what the town should really focus on, long-term plan, five years, 10 years, 15 years down the road, but get started as soon as possible, is expanding our water lines. So, tell me, tell me where I'm going wrong as far as capacity goes. I might be off a little bit, but we currently have an agreement with One Socket for up to a million gallons a day, right? And currently, we're using like 400,000 a week?
At peak, but that would be at peak demand.
Right, so.
Somewhere around 250,000 on average, 270,000 a week.
A week. And we have up to a million dollars, million gallons a day. So, there's a lot of room to expand the water lines in this town. And we should start working to start slowly going forward and expanding them, finding out where the best ways, where the best possibility to go for the money and everything, to start moving the water lines and eventually getting people hooked up that can be hooked up. For instance, we have water going right up to the intersection at Cumberland Farms and Sladeville Plaza. We also have water going up to Main Street, right at the Silver Pines. One thing we could concentrate on is completing that loop, going up, up the Gators, taking a left at Gators, going down. And now we have water looped, and water is much better when we loop it, right?
Well, it's better for the distribution system. That's correct.
Right, so, so, and what will that do? It'll supply fire suppression to everything on either side, and also will supply possibility of people, of expanding those. There's a lot of neighborhoods as you go up 102 between Bridgerdose and, and Gators. We could possibly have water for all those people on each side of the, on the road. How do we do this? We need grants, right? Everything goes full circle. We need grants. And there's a lot of money out there for, from what I understand, for, for, we were discussing this, there's a lot of money out there right now for water, grants involving water. So, this is something that I think we should begin on as soon as possible. I know Mr. Zelinski is trying to expand the water line on St. Paul Street. That's, that's a great start, because as it comes down St. Paul Street, maybe we can take it down the other way. And, but we have to start coming up with money, finding money to expand our water lines. We have the capacity, we have the agreement with One Socket, we're well below it, and we should start thinking about moving water over to Union Village. Right now, you, some people at Union Village don't even have enough water pressure to take a shower. So, let alone if there's a fire down there. So, we got to start thinking about, and how do we do it? We need grant money. Now, one suggestion that I'm going to make, and it might seem a little radical, is we create a committee of one, a one-person committee. Not, it's not really a committee, but a one person, I call it a committee. And this person would act as a liaison between the water department, between the planning department, the fire department, and, and the town council. And this person would find, would, would be coordinating with everybody and then reporting back to us to find the best way to move forward. All right, we, we could move, start looking, move water down this street with a long-term plan of connecting it to that street. And why I say one person is because we're already going to be, he's just a liaison, passing on the, helping with the information. But it's got to be somebody that's educated in that field, and there's a few people in town that come to mind. But anyway, that's down the road. But first and foremost, I would like to get your opinion on what I've said so far as far as expanding the water lines.
Yeah, I, I, I think we def, we definitely have the capacity. There's no question about that. I just think we have to kind of move a little cautious on this, like, developing that plan, right? That's really the most important, because there are a lot of things we do need within the water department. And one, first and foremost, would be like a rate study. Second, we need, we do have some aging infrastructure, so if, you know, there was money available to address those issues, like, we're moving in the right direction, we're working on Comstock Tank, we're getting those things taken care of. But we also have some aging infrastructure. We've got a lot of transite.
So, we need assistance assessment.
That's right, so we do need a, you know, an, an assessment of what we have. The, the thing is with expand, with expanding the water system, and I'm, I'm, I think it's a great idea. I think we have to be careful. A lot of times, we, we, we like development to take care of that part about it, right? So, there are going to be parts that they can't, so, but if they're putting a housing development, let's say, just down from 900 Victory Highway, if they can put that portion in, and, you know, and then we extend it, and we put an extension on it, that's great. So, having that plan in place of where we're, where we'll use our money and, you know, where we'll let development use their money, I think that's the critical part.
So, bringing the planner in on this would be also important.
Well, bringing in the planner, I mean, like, the, yeah, just having, I mean, you got to take a few things into consideration. So, we have to take into consideration, like, you know, when you get on Victory Highway, the frontage on these properties is a lot, there's a lot more frontage than there is going down the side street. So, a side street, you know, if you've got 200 feet of frontage, that's one thing. If you get to another location, it's 600. So, to, to take the Providence Pike situation, it's like, if you were to extend the water main down there, it's very expensive with, you know, very few customers paying, so, I mean, it, you're really having a study to, like.
I'm not married to Providence Pike situation, I'm just giving an example, you know.
Just as an example, and, but like I said, yeah, as, as we start looping the system, it's better for the distribution, it's better for water quality. There's a lot of good things to, you know, to filling in these little pieces, but I think it's a good idea. But I think bringing somebody in for the planning and investigation of this is really critical. Just so we, we're not just, you know, I mean, we're doing it in a way that we can afford to do it.
And next, at the next meeting, I'll have more refined suggestion as to how that position would work, and I'll ask the council to vote on creating that position, but I'm not prepared for that at this time.
May I ask a question? So, so the prioritization, I think, is key.
Exactly.
Right? So, I would love to have the entire town with fresh, wonderful water, right? Who wouldn't? But when we're looking at critical infrastructure and situations that could be detrimental to health and safety of people, I think that that's where, if we had a study done, you know, we could get a prioritization list, like we did for the roads, right? Where's Mr. Penegas? Well, he's not here, but we, we did that years ago, right? And, and they prioritize based on a certain criteria and a certain rubric and whatnot, right? So, we'd have to do that, I think, too, to, to make sure that we have, we're hitting the, the trouble spots first, right?
Yeah.
So, that would be something you would agree with.
Yeah, for sure. I mean, for, for instance, like, if you're talking about Providence Pike, we've had two water breaks on there in the past four years. That's a transite water main. There's, there's about 2,500 to 3,000 feet of transite water main in there. I mean, that could be, you know, upwards of a $1.2 million project, just, just replacing that water main going up there. So, you know, and there's other areas of town also that still have the transite. Transite was put in in the 50s. You're looking at 60 to 70-year life expectancy on that stuff. It's, it's there, you know, so, I mean, just making sure we, we get this right is going to be really important.
So, creating water down here could be a problem to the pipes feeding it if we're not.
Yeah, I, I mean, that's a, that's a really good point. It's like, if you're extending the water line on, you know, and we've, if you're extending the water line and we've got areas that the pipes are failing, I mean, we kind of put the.
Defeating the purpose.
The cart before the horse on that.
So, so can I say something? So, I think it's a good idea that we should be looking at this, and I agree, we, we probably shouldn't, we, we do need more fire suppression systems and clean drinking water. I think we already have a committee that is tasked with looking at water supply, and I think it could potentially fall under there. Other communities that have a water supply committee, it is a central function at some point where they start looking at, right? They work with the sewer and the water departments, and they say, hey, you know, what, what is the long-term plans? How's everything looking, the infrastructure? They kind of get tasked. kind of get tasked with that. I know, for example, Smithfield and their water supply group, they talk about communicating with North Smithfield at some point in the future. I don't know if that actually is ever going to be a thing, but it's on their website as part of their charter, so, we may want to look at, you know, if we need to adjust or change and maybe add members to the existing water committee if we want to, I think that might make a lot of sense as well, not to have to reinvent the wheel, we could incorporate anybody that you have in mind.
Good idea. The point is, we have, my point being is that we need to expand and spend and commit, that that's what we're going to do, and also, it all comes down, I know, as I said, we need to look for grant money to do it, because we're not going to be able to pay for it ourselves, and hopefully there's money out there to do that. Thank you. Yeah, there's no motion.
Discussion by Council of other action on adoption of the revised and reorganized code of the town of North Smithfield, including Schedule A.
So, this is our final draft for the new code book, I am just asking if we could, if everyone's reviewed it, if we could just look at this as a first reading, and then we will schedule a public hearing, like, after 45 days, right, David? It has to go, I guess I'm looking for a motion for it to go to the Planning Board for review first, to look at any changes for zoning.
So, we would approve first reading tonight, does it come back to us for second reading, next meeting, and then it would go to planning and zoning, or zoning, I mean?
This is, so, there's two pieces of this. First and foremost, because it's a, an ordinance, it has to have two readings. Because it's a, has a portion of it that a zoning ordinance, it not only requires two readings, it requires a public hearing, which we should do anyway for it all, but it also requires that the Planning Board review the changes to the zoning. Now, there are a couple of provisions, it's not substantial substantive changes to the zoning, but there are a few that change different zoning uses, and that's enough to trigger mandatory 45-day hearing at the Planning Board to say it's consistent with the comprehensive plan and make a recommendation back. Then you have to, supposed to have a hearing no later than 65, but if we schedule it for 45 and we can meet that deadline, Planning Board hopefully can look at this, it's not a lot of substantive change, they're not going to look at the whole code, it's just going to be the zoning, they don't have any jurisdiction over the other provisions, just the zoning provisions, they're supposed to, so that's the purpose. So, today would be a first reading, then it'd be scheduled for a public hearing, and then second reading, and whether that's going to be sufficient is going to depend on that public hearing, like always, right? But most of these changes are updates, corrections, pieces of legislation that never made it in the code to remind the Council that that's part of what the code, this general code was hired to do, and also to make sure it's consistent with the Charter, state law, and the code itself, there are provisions that were inconsistent inside the code itself, and they went through it, they have a whole staff of editors that reviewed that code and made proposal, proposed changes, and actually, the clerk submitted this to all the departments and asked them to give input.
Oh, good.
So, that this is, you know, is it perfect? No, but it's a major step forward that's long overdue. Under the Charter, it's supposed to be done every 10 years, a massive review, and it's been more than 10 years. So, it's just the first step in scheduling a public hearing, and referral to the Planning Board, the zoning portion.
So, I'll make a motion to accept, make a motion to accept the, where are we? The revised and reorganized code of the town of North Smithfield, including Schedule A, and to send this to the Planning Board for next, the zoning portion to the Planning Board for their public hearing and next steps. Their recommendations, sorry, their recommendations.
I'll second. I have a question. No, I just have a question. If we're asking the Planning Board to review, can they turn it down even though the, most of these changes have been, already been approved? No?
Planning Board only makes a recommendation, if they fail to act, if you go forward, it's only, it's only a reservation.
Okay, sorry, go ahead.
So, we have a motion, second.
And you seconded?
I did.
Any further discussion? Mr. Bureau God?
Yes.
Ms. Hamilton?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Hara?
Yes.
Mr. Oger?
Yes.
Ms. Alves?
Yes.
Madam President, may I make a suggestion?
Thank you.
If we move up Agenda Item 8 before we go into executive session, so anybody that wants to be heard doesn't have to sit through-
Yeah, that makes sense.
Sure. All right, we're going to move to open forum now for Agenda Items Only, anyone would like to speak?
Hey, I'm Bob Gillette, 49 Orchard Street. I'm neither, I have no horse in the race other than I'm a taxpayer, but a full disclosure, I'm a 34-year veteran in law enforcement. As I sit here, and I serve on the juvenile hearing board, as I sit here and read the articles and everything, I also reflect on my own career. When I started out, we were carrying revolvers, and we were buying cars that normal civilians drove, and we threw a cage in them. The job has evolved so much more, and the training has evolved so much more, and the requirements. North Smithfield is no different than the agency I serve, we can't find candidates, and those candidates that come through the training, whether it be the state police, the sheriffs, corrections, or the municipal academy, are coming through with the highest training possible. They need to be able to be utilized, or their training be able to be utilized in the way that they were trained. Bushy is a school, it's a dilapidated school. I dispatched there when I was in high school and in college in my kindergarten class. It was a Band-Aid, as I remember correctly, when Roger Emalad was the chief, from the basement of the old town hall. And now here we sit, we're trying to put lipstick on a pig. The place is falling apart. You're not going to keep the few candidates that you get in a station that they cannot utilize what they've been taught at a basic level, let alone those that are fortunate enough to go to the FBI Academy or greater. You're also taking on a great liability, or the term that my chief likes to use, vicarious liability, if the institution, the four walls, are not there to protect both the civilians, the incarcerated, as well as the officers, decontamination, airflow, I could go on. The court that I serve, they just had to spend millions of dollars in the lockup facilities. There, some of them go back to 1920-something. Mr. Bureau God being a trooper knows what the old Lincoln barracks looked like, I know what the Hope Valley barracks looked like because I frequented it quite often when I was down there. The state is also looking at, major, major expansions. We have an opportunity to do this right once. I'm telling you, if it's not done right, you're going to pay tenfold later on, either through attrition of candidates that are going to leave to go to East Providence, because everybody's fishing from the same pond right now. They're getting retirees, or you come off the graduation podium, you know the job is better across the street, you're going across the street. You know, you're getting better equipment, better training, and a better roof over your head. You know, there are comments about a weight room. It's a physical job. As a deputy, as a trooper, as whatever, an officer, we become a property of the town or the government, we're an investment, and with that investment, you either invest in health and nutrition, or you invest in insurance and IOD, injured on duty. These people have to be able to perform, and the performance of the job now compared to my 34 years ago is a whole lot different, and it changes every day, it's a living, breathing thing, just like the law. So, I just hope that you really take people that walk the line, so to speak, and, you know, do I want my taxes to go up? No, I don't want my taxes to go up, but, you know, it's time, it's time, it was time 10, 15 years ago. Putting political differences aside, these people are in the middle, and they're there for us when we need them, we need to be there for them. On a second note, regarding the water, I'm going to show my age, going back to when I was a volunteer, a short-term fix for those areas for fire suppression would be a dry hydrant. They have them all through South County Rhode Island, it's a 10,000, 5,000 gallon tank, it's literally in the ground, has a stair pipe, tanker escort hooks up to it, they have at least water to get on the fire until the tanker escort is set up. I would suggest you talk to some of the departments down in Hope Valley, because they're still utilized quite a bit until they can do a tanker escort. That could be a short-term fix and maybe a less intrusive or expensive fix, just from my experience. There's my two cents. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Franklin Bardo, I live in Laurelwood, number 24, and I was hearing the discussion about grants, and you mentioned something about, well, we've got to have something now to work in place, but with that in mind, there's a site, Department of Energy site, that offers grants, the one that's out there right now has to do, it's called Solar Energy Technology Office, S E T O is the acronym for it, but the government just announced some grant money and opportunities to earn money, loan money, because everything, but if you hop on the DOE site, especially, you have a dam here, and I'm kind of curious as to, are you utilizing the dam for generation of electricity? Can you? They put turbines on the dam.
It's funny you say that, because that is being looked into, it's privately owned, but that is being looked into whether it owns it right now.
All right, okay, yeah, because I figured that would be great to help pay for some electricity that the town has to pay for, so, just a little thought, I just want to pass that on to you folks.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
I want to address a few things here with what was said earlier during the meeting, which I think was very misleading. First of all, an architect, John, you used the example of, if you need a plumber, you don't call an electrician, and if you need an electrician, you don't call a plumber. They're licensed by two different boards. An architect is allowed by license and law to design anything he wants to do. They build a specialty in a certain area after they're into their career for a number of years, but I would call an architect to build anything I wanted to build, and the law, and the legislation and the regulations for licensing allow him to build anything he wants to build. As Paulette said, this is a renovation, this isn't even a new station, so, you know, I think it's kind of ridiculous to use that as an example, because an electrician didn't pass the plumber's test, and the plumber didn't pass the electrician's test, but I think the point is, an architect can design anything that you want designed, by law, okay? So, secondly, you know, I think what Paulette was suggesting made sense, I feel badly that you're not willing to pay him, if all of a sudden this is a big issue, because it's $2,000 and it's going to Mr. Army, you've extended contracts, you've awarded contracts to R G B for, let's say, $80,000. Then you kept amending it, adding little things on, and we ended up paying him $190, and you did the same thing for Tech Don, he's been paid a lot more than what the contracts initially were. I wish Mr. Igliozzi would speak up when that happens, because I personally think the man is owed the $2,000. He's actually owed the $2,000 from 2016, because if you remember correctly, John, you were on the committee at the time, I don't think you were, Kim, but the M B R T F refused to pay him his last invoice. They wanted his work product, and he agreed to give him the digital work product when he made the, when they made the final payment to him of $1,800 to $1,200, it was peanuts. They wouldn't pay him, because they said they didn't have any proof that he did the work. Well, that's not his fault, he had done the work, and so they didn't pay him, and instead they hired an attorney and spent like $7,500 to get the plans, and Mr. Army didn't acquiesce to the lawyer, he got sick and tired of answering all the phone calls about it and said, it's taking, it's too much of a distraction for me, screw it, I'll eat the $1,500, $1,200 or $1,800, okay? So, I think we owe him that money anyway, because we've already screwed him once. Secondly, I think what you, you know, as far as getting the estimator to do the cost, yes, Paul is correct, we know what the prices are, or were in 2016 when the bids were opened, because we have all the bids, and it isn't, you know, you're walking at things, but if you spend $8,000 or $6,000, whatever Mr. Army is, tells you what it is going to cost the estimator to calculate the new cost, you will have a dollar amount for the bond issue in November. It's not rocket scientists, you know, it's not rocket scientific, it's a simple matter. You work, you give the plans, which by the way, we spent $225,000 on. We have designed plans to build this thing tomorrow if you approve it, and it's $225,000 that we've paid for it, and you walked away from them, so, you know, it's just ludicrous what I keep hearing here, and I don't think it's fair to exonerate yourself from any responsibility for getting us in this screwed-up position of being six years after 2016, still not having put a penny into the police station, because it was your counsel, John, who voted not to allow the P B I C, who you say didn't want any part to do with Mr. Army, that's your opinion.
No, I'm just reading the words.
No, you're reading the opinions, the words of, I don't know who wrote the minutes, but you know for a fact that members of that committee begged you, begged you to give them an audience at the council, and appear before the council with Mr. Army. I know for a fact that, I don't know, I'm trying to think, who is it that you think is, didn't want Mr. Army back? I think what happened at those minutes is, if that's the one with the joint committee with the council and everything, Eric Army wasn't at that meeting, and they were frazzled when they were asked other questions, and they said, you know, like, who do you blame, and I, I don't know, we'll have to ask Eric, I don't know why he did that, I mean, and we're reading into it with nonsense. That man's reputation was maligned by many people in this community, and many people in this community are now under the impression, after six years of misstating fact, just bold-faced lying, people don't even know what was in those plans. A lot of people are under the impression it was wallpaper and paint. That was a major gut job, and then everything being replaced, basically. So, if it cost, and the high bid was 3.2 million, I think we're safe to say it's going to be under five or six, and I'd like, and I don't expect him to come in here, and, you know, I think it's insulting that you're saying he has to come in and give his credentials, just to come in here and meet with you, you're afraid to hear what he has to say, and you're afraid to let the community members know what he has to say. Eric's not a vindictive person, he's not going to look at you, John, and say, I heard you wrote this on the Valley Breeze website about me. I'll do that, Eric won't do it.
I never wrote a thing about him.
Oh, yes, you did, yeah, I did, you did, I got plenty of them, okay, but anyway, oh, listen, after I sat here and listened to the lies, I'm not, it's going to be hard to shut me up tonight, I'm sorry, I'm so frustrated by this, and to be able to sit here and make all this nonsense, and all of a sudden we're all concerned about the police and where they work, for six years you haven't spent a dime. That was your counsel, and your M B R T F, six years, not a dime into that building, it was intentional. So, I would like to, I would encourage you, when you meet with him, let him give you a presentation so that everybody in the community can see that presentation of what is in those plans that he has, because they look to me like they're covering all the bases that the new $16 million building is, a $20 million, or whatever it's going to cost now is going to cost. And I'm going back to the point that I raised earlier, but I'm going to do it a little more forcefully. Somebody explain to me why you're having him calculate a price for the same square footage of a one-story building. I was here at the meeting when Mr. Oshier asked him, is it any cheaper to build a one-story building? And he said, no. So, instead of saying, okay, send us your proposal and tell us how much I'm going to have to pay you to give me that number, why don't you just say to him, are we talking a million bucks, are we talking 5 million, can you give us a ballpark, how much cheaper is this going to be? I'm sick of paying these people money. We've spent like half a million dollars on, more than that, I'm sorry, just between the two of them, the last two, we've spent probably $400,000 to $500,000, and I'd encourage you too, to get a, I've been saying that for years, get an accounting of what you've spent on architects and consultants, it's over and over and over again. We could have done something more with that building for all that money. Anyway, I certainly hope you do, are willing to listen when the man comes and does a presentation, and does, explains to you what was in that program. And Mr. Oshier, you don't even know what you're rejecting, because you weren't even on the committee when Mr. Army-
Excuse me, Mr. Clifford, have I said I'm rejecting anything?
No, no, you said, you said you were- No, no, you said, you said you were.
I was on the council in August of 2020. I asked, go back and check, August 3rd and August 15th. I pushed, when the council was going to go 4-0 at the time, to go forward with the tech, go forward with the study to look at a new police station. I pushed after I had called for a joint meeting with the M B R T F earlier that year, before COVID had hit. And I had said, "I want a cost of a renovation." I ran for the administrative position and lost the poll, respectfully. And I was unable to then have any say away on it. I spoke at the November 20th or something, 2021 meeting, and I had questioned the price tag at the time. And I still question the cost.
My point to you is, you.
I haven't rejected anything.
Were hedging on whether or not it was worthwhile to bring someone in because of their qualifications. That has nothing to do with it. All you're looking at is what was the project? And you've never seen the project. So you should at least want to see the project.
But Mike, procedurally, I agree with you that an architect can do whatever they want and design whatever they want. And Eric has, based on his website, designed the Providence G. He's done fantastic work. But there is also another reason procedurally why you go for an architect who also has experience in public safety and that type of line of work. Now, I am, I said tonight, I'm still for bringing him in and listening to him as a Plan B and as a backup. I have never once said I'm against that idea.
And I'm just saying, you should have jumped in and supported it initially because you have never seen the plans.
I, I, okay, I'm not, I'm not dissing.
You have his thing. And make a decision based on knowing the facts and looking at the facts.
All right, thank you. All right, now we're going into.
I'm going to get Hammond on Cliff Notes.
Oh, sorry.
That's okay, if I may. Joey Savigny, 1790 Ponteau Road. Coming from a public safety background, I also agree with Mr. Gillette. I was the last class at Bushy School 43 years ago. The building was failing then. That's why they got rid of it as a school. They put lipstick on it because we needed a police station. And 43 years later, we need a new police station. I think the time has come, and I think it's up to the town council. You were elected by the people of this community because they trusted you. If you come forward as a group together and say, "Listen, we need a new police station. And this is why." The constituents that elected you are going to listen to you because that's why they put you there. Yeah, there are going to be some naysayers in the crowd that don't want to see their taxes raised, don't want to see a new police station. But the people that elected you put you there for a reason. And they'll support whatever decisions you guys back if you do it as a group. That's all I got to say. Thank you.
Anyone else?
So I'm just going to make a motion to extend the meeting to 11 because it's already 10 o'clock pretty much.
Thank you.
I think so. Just do all in favor.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Extending.
Yeah, aye.
Next item is executive session. Discussion by council vote or other action in its capacity as North Smithfield Town Council and as the Board of Directors of the Sladeusville Water Company pursuant to Rhode Island General Law 42465A2. Sessions pertaining to collective bargaining or litigation or work sessions pertaining to collective bargaining or litigation or potential litigation. One, potential litigation. B, discussion by council vote or other action pursuant to Rhode Island General Law 42465A2. Sessions pertaining to collective bargaining or litigation or work sessions pertaining to collective bargaining or litigation or potential litigation. One, collective bargaining changes for the recording clerk's job description, pay, and memorandum of understanding with Rhode Island Council 94A F S C M E A F L C I O on behalf of Local 937. Potential litigation regarding town retirement fund. And C, discussion by council vote or other action pursuant to Rhode Island General Law 42465A5. Any discussions or considerations related to the acquisition of lease of real property for public purposes or of the disposition of publicly held property wherein advanced public information would be detrimental to the interests of the public? One, discussion vote, discussion vote or other action on acquisition of real property for public purposes.
I'll make a motion. We move into executive session.
Second. We have a motion, a second. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Yes.
Ms. Hamilton?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Hara?
Yes.
Mr. Oshier?
Yes.
Ms. Alves?
Yes.
Oh my God.
All right, I'll make a motion that we come out of executive session and reconvene in the open session. Let the record reflect that two votes were taken, one of which was to extend the meeting and to ex- and to seal the minutes.
Second?
Oh, and to seal the minutes. Didn't I say that?
First you vote to come out.
So two motions?
Two votes.
Okay, so I'll make a motion to come out of executive session.
Second?
When CJ tells you're in open session, you make a motion.
So are we back now in open?
We're back.
Okay, so now I'll make a motion to come out of executive session.
Motion to reconvene.
Motion to reconvene in open.
Indicate that.
And indicate that two votes, three, two votes, three votes were taken, two of which are sealed, one to extend the meeting and to seal the minutes.
That's correct.
Second, that's a motion, a second, any discussion, roll call.
Mr. Bureau God?
Yes.
Ms. Hamilton?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Hara?
Yes.
Mr. Ogier?
Yes.
Ms. Alves?
Yes.
Now you're on item 7A.
I can do it if you want. Discussion by council voter other actions capacity as the North Smithfield Town Council and as the Board of Directors of the Sladeville Water Company on Phillips North America LLC's request for an extension of the existing water line to the residential properties at 31925 Providence Street in Millville, Massachusetts. I'd like to make a motion that we approve the Phillips North America LLC water line extension proposal as amended with amendment to include subject to discussion with Phillips in the event that the total cost exceeds $260,000 on the payment for water connections, item one, part B, and that this deal is ratified on the agreement that all terms, that subject to all terms and conditions have been met.
Prior to the extension.
Prior to the extension.
Second, second, any further discussion?
Yes, please, I just want to go on record that I am adamantly opposed to this agreement. I'm not going to get into everything, I just got into executive session, I don't think I could do that all over again, but I am adamantly opposed to this. I think that this is a bad deal for the town and a worse deal for the rate payers in the Sladeville water system. I think Phillips can step up and do a lot better than what they're offering, but that's just my opinion right now, but I'm going to be a hard no on this.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Bureau God?
No.
Ms. Hamilton?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Hara?
No.
Mr. Ogier?
Yes.
Ms. Alves?
Yes.
And then I'll make a motion to adjourn.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Thank you.